Okay, we are on. Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May 1, 2017. This is the meeting of the Oregon Village Board. 5:00 PM. I'd like to call any order and request roll call, please.
Boudreau?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Druckhauer?
Brenier?
Here.
Balig?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Staten?
Here. Thank you. I first would like to welcome Troop 168 to our meeting. Anybody from the troop like to address the board on your reason here? Looks like we have a taker. If you could come right to the microphone, please. That way everyone can hear and we get you on TV.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Halt-Singer. I am with Troop 168. I also work for the Oregon Chamber. And we brought the boys here today for Communications Mayor Badge so that they can listen and observe to what goes on in a board meeting and be more familiar with the community as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And welcome to all of you. It's more pleased to have you here. So Item 3 is Public Appearances. Item A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Jefferson Crossing Project Items. The Development Agreement Including Discussion of Parking Plan and Conveyance of Property. So do you want to start this, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Just so those that are here know, the scouts, Matt Dragney, Mr. Dragney is our village attorney.
Hi, everyone. You picked a good night to come. This is a great project that we're going to be talking about. So I've handed out a summary of the main elements of the Development Agreement that was included in the packet that went out last week. And so I'm going to be referring to the summary and I will also make a few references to the Development Agreement. So, of course, everyone on the board is familiar with what we're calling the Jefferson Crossing Project. And if anyone's been over there lately, they're actually starting to work over there. The Development Agreement, I'm going to kind of break it down into several components, starting with what the developer's obligations are. In big-picture terms, the developer is responsible for the construction of the Jefferson Crossing Building, which is the apartment building itself, reconstructing the parking lot, that's the entire parking lot, that would be the village municipal lot and the private parking lot serving the building, and working with Alliant to underground the utility lines on Jefferson Street. The village is responsible for working with Alliant to bury the overhead utility lines currently located in the village parking lot. As a result of undergrounding those lines, we're going to have to reconnect the businesses on Main Street to that new underground electric, and we'll be responsible for that. And we this agreement addresses, one is the exchange of property between the developer and the village. There is an Exhibit A to this summary of main elements that shows a small piece of the existing village parking lot that would be conveyed to the developer, and then some land that the developer owns that would be conveyed to the village. The reason for this conveyance is really to create a more workable and practical and beneficial property line between the village's parking lot and the developer's project. And the board has, you know, I think we've talked about that previously. I have with me tonight one of my colleagues, Vanessa Wishart, who after what I'm done is going to speak to an issue that we've looked at regarding this exchange of property. We're going to be taking title to some property, and we recognize the number of weeks ago, I need to at least think about the potential for environmental issues there. So Vanessa will tell you kind of what our assessment is of that issue as of tonight. The parking lot that results from this project, as I say, will be partly a municipal parking lot and partly a private parking lot. But both the developer and the developers' tenants in the new building and members of the public are going to need the ability to kind of drive through the drive aisles within this parking lot. And so we have as part of this agreement, a Cross Eastman Agreement, that allows for the public to drive where necessary on the drive aisles within the parking lot and developers' tenants to do likewise. We also have provided in this agreement for ongoing maintenance of the parking lot. The village will be responsible for snow removal and routine maintenance within the parking lot. Jeff Rao has done some work to determine what an appropriate maintenance fee would be for that. And we've included in the agreement that that fee would be for the first year, $1,500. And that's kind of the baseline then. And then going forward, that fee would increase each year based on inflation using the Consumer Price Index for the Midwest region. If we have nonroutine maintenance work that needs to be done, such as repaving, for example, the agreement provides that that work would be divided, the cost of that would be divided between the village and the developer, with 66% of the cost going to the village and 30% of the cost going to the developer. That percentage, Jeff can explain the calculation, but I think it's basically an area calculation based on the area of the parking lot that is municipal versus private. So we got 66% municipal and 34% private.
Matt, real quick.
Yeah.
Should I hold questions to the end or as you go?
However you want. If you have a question now, that's fine.
Quick question about the snow removal.
Yeah.
Where will the snow go?
Much like how we handle our current parking lots, the municipal parking lots, usually on the initial portion, we will plow into an area that works for the parking lot. And then that's kind of just to be able to clear the parking lot and be able to maintain and keep it open. And then usually in the following days after the snow event has passed, we'll come in and scoop that out, load that into trucks. And then lately, it's been going into the parking lot over there off of Oak Street.
Thank you.
So that's the, there is an exhibit attached also to the summary of main elements that shows the parking area and illustrates the concept that the village is responsible for snow removal and maintenance for the parking lot, with the developer reimbursing the village for a share of that expense. Finally, from a financial standpoint, in order to make this development feasible, the Development Agreement provides for several tax increment financing-based grants to help pay for this development. Now on Item 5 on the summary of main elements. The first grant is a grant in the amount of up to $80,000 to reimburse the developer for the actual cost of undergrounding those utility lines on Jefferson Street. That would be payable upon completion of the work and delivery of a final invoice from Alliant so we can verify the cost. The second grant is The second grant is in the amount of $103,150 payable to the developer upon completion of the parking lot. And the third grant is what we kind of, what we refer to as a pay-as-you-go grant. It's a municipal revenue obligation in the amount of $800,000 that would be issued to the developer upon the issuance of an occupancy permit for the completed apartment building. This municipal revenue obligation would be payable with interest at 5% with interest beginning to accrue from May 1, 2018. It would be payable solely from tax increment generated by the development itself. So this is not a general obligation of the village. This is not a general obligation that would fall upon taxpayers. In the event that the project is not generating the level of increment necessary to make that payment, the developer simply doesn't receive the payment. We have structured this municipal revenue obligation in the agreement so that each year, it will be paid off as quickly as possible. There is a schedule that's been generated and attached to the agreement that shows that the intent is to apply all the increment the project generates to payment of that municipal revenue obligation each year until it's paid in full. There have been a couple of really minor tweaks to the agreement since the packet was sent out last week, namely, a couple of adjustments to the recitals to make reference to one of the corporate entities that's been formed here. There are really two entities the developer is working with. One is kind of a vehicle for financing-related purposes, for tax purposes, and then the other is the actual project owner. So there's a couple of references in the recitals to Lake Stone Holdings, which is going to receive the tax increment from the village and then make it available for funding the project. So I'd call them non-substantive adjustments to the agreement. In case you read it in detail over the weekend and are wondering if there have any changes, there have been a couple of small changes. I know at least one of you read the whole thing, I was told, in detail. Trustee Grenier asked me a question about whether or not tenants who rent apartments would have included with their apartment and within their rent for their apartment a parking stall in the underground parking area. Was that the question? Yes. And so in talking with Mike about how, I know that was addressed, and our recollection is that it was a requirement of the general development plan that was approved by the village as part of the zoning process. So that is, in fact, a required component of the general development plan. Is that your recollection also, guys? Yeah. So our understanding is that there is a requirement in place already that requires just that. So if you rent an apartment in the building, you're automatically obtaining a parking stall. And I think that is, if you have any questions about the agreement, I'd be happy to address those. Now, we do have, as I said, we have an issue for Vanessa to present on.
Matt, anything, just go back to the MRR on that schedule. Make sure the board understands that if you turn through Exhibit E...
Or F?
I'm sorry. It will be paid off sooner than this or maybe a year later. But the idea is that if there's increment that's generated that's even beyond this schedule, they're going to receive it up to the inner $1,000 plus interest. And that way, once the project's paid off, then that increment can just go into TIF 5, which would be the overlay district bonus.
Thank you.
So Matt, you had alluded to a conversation about the soil quality in the parking lot that we're going to be taking over. Is that what Vanessa's going to be discussing?
Yes.
Are there any questions anyone has for Matt right now? If not, we'll go to Vanessa.
I just, so as I'm reading all these things and adding it up, in addition to the $800,000 TIF money, all these other things add to just under 1.3 million. Did I figure that out correctly, that we're participating in this project with?
Yeah, it's the 800,000?
Yep.
Plus the 103,150?
Yep.
And the 80?
Yeah.
And then?
Then our work.
And then our work. We've got $20,000 to bury the utility lines in the parking lot, $20,000 to reconnect businesses. And the street lighting, that's an estimate right now. That's not a final number necessarily. No decision has been made, as I understand, about exactly how many lights and where and what design and what cost, but this is our, this is a number that we have to work with for now. Fair enough?
Yes, correct.
Jeff hasn't decided what kind of lights he likes yet over there, I guess. So, any other questions before we turn to Vanessa?
Vanessa?
Working on this, I recognized, and I know we've been working on this agreement for quite a while, and obviously they had a lot of this real estate that's up, and got to at least ask the question, do we have an environmental issue to be addressing back there? And so since that time, developer about what we know and what the options are for dealing with that. And so I'm going to let Vanessa talk about what we know and what our options are.
Great, thank you. So I handed out, just to start with, two maps. One map, I think you've probably seen before, that shows what the area of land is going to be transferred to the village. And then this other map, the black and white map, is a map from a Phase 2 that was done on the site in 2003. So I'm going to refer to these two maps as I kind of walk through what we have here.
No, tell them what a Phase 2 is.
I'm sorry, sure. A Phase 2 is a site investigation that includes some sampling to figure out what kind of contamination might be at the property. So it's a Phase 1 typically sites, we'll go through a Phase 1, which is a site investigation that explores the history of the site and what environmental concerns might be on the site. And then a Phase 2 usually includes sampling for potential environmental conditions. So this, what I'll be talking about primarily is the Phase 2. We know from the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 and just generally that this site, the part of the site that's going to be, the parking lot for the village, has been used for a long time as an auto repair shop. So the Phase 2 is what I'll be referring to, discusses the actual site investigation, the sampling work that's been done on the site. So in 2003, there was a, this Phase 2 was completed, and as part of the Phase 2, there were a number of groundwater and soil samples collected for a number of different potential contaminants, mostly petroleum-based products, given that it was an auto repair shop. But some other ones as well, PCBs, lead, things that might arise in this type of site. So the, for the soil samples, so when you look at this, the map from the Phase 2, you'll see these little dots that say B, like B5, B3, B2. Those are the boring locations. Only part of that will be included in what the village will be taking over. So if you look at the color map, you can see an outline of what, sort of, if you overlay these two, you can kind of see what part of that area will be part of this agreement. So we're thinking, this is not entirely exact, but we're thinking that it would include at least B5 and B1 and possibly B2. So certainly this paint shop and storage building, probably this covered storage area and maybe part of the shop building. So when the Phase 2 was completed, the results for the soil samples were that there were no detacs for any contaminant other than lead. There was a detect for lead at B1 and B2, but both of those detacs were well below state standards. And then as far as the groundwater sampling, there were some detacs for certain contaminants, volatile organic compounds, petroleum-based products at B1, B2, and B4. But again, all of those detacs were well below state enforcement standards. So there was, so the conclusion from this Phase 2, which again was completed in 2003, is that there's not, there are no environmental contamination issues here. The site was not reported to DNR because there wasn't a contamination issue, and there was no remediation that needed to occur. So that was the end of this, as far as we know, the end of the study on the site in 2003. What we also know is that after 2003, and I think up through 2016, the site continued to be used as an auto repair shop. And there was not, to our knowledge, any additional site testing that occurred during that 13-year period. So when we're considering what the environmental issues might be here, there's really two questions. So the first one, how complete was this 2003 Phase 2? And generally speaking, given the very low level of detacs, it's likely from this Phase 2 that there is not a big environmental concern on the site. The one thing to consider is that when the Phase 2 was conducted, all of these buildings that you can see on the map were still present. So there wasn't sampling that was conducted under the actual buildings themselves. So there could have been environmental contamination, environmental contamination could have arisen from dumping of things out behind these areas, from cars that were just stored on parking lot structures, or from actual work within the building. Although I think in this situation, not highly likely that there is contamination not detected in the Phase 2 because there wasn't sampling actually done underneath the buildings. So that's one consideration. In this scenario, given how close the samples were taken to the buildings, and we actually just, we stopped at the site on our way here, given how small a lot of these buildings were, the actual structures aren't enormous, particularly for this like paint shop area. At least it looks like the footprint wasn't very large. It's not, it's not very likely that there would be contamination issues under these buildings that we just wouldn't detect at all from the borings. So that's, so that's one consideration here. The other consideration is that since 2003, there are some things at this particular site that make it less likely that that would be a problem. One, I mean, the biggest mitigating factor here is that for the area that the village will be taking over, it appears that's all asphalt, barrier and protect against any contamination that might enter the land under the asphalt. So that's a good consideration. I don't, I don't know very much about the actual practices at this particular facility, but generally speaking, we're less likely to see contamination from like dumping of chemicals in the 2000s as opposed to in like the 80s and 90s. So it's less likely that that would be a concern here. But you know, it's certainly, it's certainly possible that something, that there was something that occurred from 2003 until 2016 that created some environmental issues. So given that history, there's, and given I think how the negotiate, how you're proceeding so far with the agreement, there's sort of, there's two primary paths to take here. The first, probably the more conservative path would be to hire a consultant to do some additional sampling before the agreement is signed. And in this case, it would probably, because the buildings have been mostly removed, there's still foundation there, but there's not buildings, it would be pretty simple, I think, to do some additional borings in the area, just to make sure that nothing was missed in the Phase 2 in 2003 and that nothing has occurred since then that would be a contamination issue. The other option is to proceed with the agreement, and if there is, if there is contamination discovered, that's something then that the village, as the title holder to the property, would need to deal with in that moment. Given the kind of, given the kind of work done, you know, the use of this area as a repair shop, it's certainly not like it was an insurance company. So there is a possibility that there is some contamination, but it's not likely that it would be an extremely large amount of money. It's not a huge area that would have to be remedied. So it's probably not, it, the cost to remediate any problems that might be here would probably be in like the tens of thousands as opposed to, you know, we've seen sites that are millions. So it's not, it's not, it's probably not a huge concern to begin with, given the history of the site, what we know about the site, and it's probably not a very, very large amount of money that would need to be invested if there is a problem here.
Can I just add a couple things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Vanessa. So it's a, and it's a, what are the significant differences between those two approaches? So if we were to do testing, I think there are two consequences for that. One, it would slow us down on the agreement piece. I'm not sure if the developer would just keep going, given where they are. And if we were to do the testing and find that there was an issue, well, in one sense, we could say to the developer, you know, gee, you got to clean that up. In another sense, given the extent of the kind of partnership we have with this developer on this project already, where we're looking at investing about $1 million of TIF money to make this project work, my guess is that we will be very much address that, and we may be participating financially to some extent. Legally, though, we'd be in a different position just because we don't own it yet, so clean it up. But we certainly would want to keep the project moving and to be cooperative with the developer to make that happen. If we were to just approve the agreement and move forward, if there's no contamination that's discovered as on village-owned property at that point, we'd have a legal responsibility to clean it up and a financial response. Whether or not the, whether we sign the agreement now and find a problem later or find a problem that probably involved in one way or another in trying to solve the problem, we would be in a somewhat different legal posture as the owner versus, the call really is your call as to how you want to proceed with this issue. It's my understanding and the developers here that they, you know, they have the same information, maybe they have their own assessment of the project and the property and made the decision, obviously, to move forward. So I see you guys, maybe I saw a hand up. So if you have anything you want to add?
Excuse me.
So, hold on, one second, Mike. So this is Mike Montalto, he's our General Counsel in Newland Testing, who initially did the site, looked at those, and then since, earlier, and then Mike has received some information even more recent from since the buildings have been taken.
There is no contaminants, so we removed it like we would a normal building. That'll come when we hit it in there that the contaminants were able to be, that building was able to be hauled away, so.
You mentioned soil borings that you had done more recently than 2003. I didn't, we didn't receive any of that specifically.
Those weren't taken for environmental, though. Those are more taken, Mike.
Oh, those were structural.
We did see some structural.
Is there anything you'd like us to do? We're going to be digging that area out. We pretty much can tell if there's contaminants and we would stop.
That's us talking since we talked last.
Okay. Any questions?
I think it's likely to be a couple of thousand dollars.
Couple of thousand dollars.
But not a significant amount.
Right.
Yeah.
If there were contaminants discovered in the process, would there be reason to delay the project while the contaminants were removed?
Well, we'll hear from these guys. Here's my thought, but I, you guys get about contaminants back in the corner of the parking lot that, where that paint shop was?
Right.
My guess is that in your phasing schedule, that parking lot's going to come last. So I'm speculating, but my sense is you guys keep working on your project while we, while the parking area remediation is addressed and the project stays on schedule. But you guys need to tell us what your take is on that.
Want to stop anything. The site that we're conveying to the city, they're flowing down hospital. I defer to Mike on that one.
So the DNR's out by truck. I don't think it'll slow us. They'll do some borings if they find that it's contaminated and teletruck them.
Okay, so it's a lot easier to find or test, I should say test, and possibly find contaminants now than it would be to discover them much later in the process and have to dig up a structure or a finished parking lot. I don't know what was here before this paint shop either. You know, I wonder about that sometime, you know, an older site like this. So I guess I would like to test and find out what's underneath there.
So besides the cost, there'd be the timing, right, Jeff? We'd have to go out?
I think one of the things to focus on this, and I've been through a couple situations where we dealt with Phase 1, Phase 2 analyses. One thing to kind of focus on here is that we do have a significant amount of information already, and when you see something like this, it's a little more wide. If we started seeing some VOC, strong VOC hits in B1, you'd probably be picking it up in trace amounts in B5 and B2. And I think Vanessa would probably agree with me on that. And that's typical of what you see, you hear it described as a plume or a contaminated area. I think, you know, the fact that this was done in 2003 with very minor detacs, it's not, it's not unusual to have very minor detacs below the minimum contaminant levels that you see that the DNR sets. I mean, I'm happy to hear, actually, I hadn't seen this until this afternoon and... and I'm happy to hear this because I think you would be picking up something if there was a history of, of problems out in that area. And honestly, this is something that I think Mike would probably agree with me. It's not something that, it's not unusual to have to deal with something like this. There are thousands of the time with much, much, soils are cleaned out or they're hauled, but it's not, it's not off the confident. You know, sometimes when you see this, when, when you start to get concerned is when you show up at a site and it's a big old oil stain, you know, or there's, there's a bunch of oily or old chemical barrels sitting behind and you see leaks on the, the concrete or in the ground and you almost know right away you're gonna be dealing with something. I did actually walk through that area before the, the paint shop building was torn down and I was actually surprised. It was, it was pretty clean. So I think, you know, from Matt and from Vanessa's standpoint, obviously looking at it from the legal standpoint, there's the hundred percent certainty, which is you test and you test and you test. Or there's, you know, at what point do you say we're confident that it's okay? It may not be and we just deal with that at the time. But I, I agree, I don't think we're talking about a major remediation in that point.
So what's your recommendation Jeff?
My recommendation is I'd, I'd have confidence in what, what we see here. And I, you know, and like Mike was saying, if, if, let's say they go out and dig this tomorrow or let's say they go out and dig this six months from now and you start to get a detect, you know, you can usually smell the petroleum's, you can smell those kind of things. If you get a detective that, they stop. That's when the additional testing comes in. They get an idea of what they're dealing with and then we start to look at the extent of that.
I guess the other point I wanted to bring up, it might not slow the construction aspect of the project down, but there could be some complications on our side as financing starts and working with the bank. They do want to see this developer agreement signed. So if the board does feel very strongly about seeing some testing done, if there's some kind of an addendum to the agreement that would give us the time but yet have this agreement in place, that may be something we're open to. But you know, from the standpoint of construction, we can continue moving. We'll get to a point, at some point where we'll need the construction draw to be, you know, a factor. And at that point, that would slow construction down.
When we dig this, I can just give Jeff a call. And we can take a look at it and we can see if there's, there's any, any change in the soil conditions. Right now, we've been fortunate enough to hit a lot of sand, clean sand. And we're not gonna do that till next year. And if you're nervous, we could, Jeff and I can look at it with the excavator and I can even have Newlin there. It's not a big deal. We don't mind doing that if that would be.
Do you mean getting out there and digging in that area more quickly, just to see what's there?
We are gonna scrape that concrete off and put gravel so people can park there. We can dig down a couple scoops, six, eight feet and see what's down there. Well, we gotta take that concrete out now anyway because it's a hazard. And we're gonna put gravel in there. It, it's 30 seconds to, we got us, we can go down eight feet with two scoops. We can take a look and if Jeff wants to come out, we can look at it and see if it's just a bad soil, sandy soil or, or contaminated. And, and a lot of times you can tell when you have three people that have seen it before. But, but my guess, I feel confident it's okay. So we could just dig the hole.
I wouldn't be worried about it. I.
Well, I know, I know. I'm just wanna make sure everybody's comfortable in, in the conditions there. I think that report, I'm happy actually.
In, in all transparency here is, is we're giving them land too. And they're not requesting a phase two from the village for the land that we're transferring to them. Now, the, the history on this is, is more of a, I believe it was a livery. Is that right?
Isn't that where they kept the horses?
I think that's where they kept the horses. But it was not a livery in the last 15, 20 years, I don't believe. But you know, and we have no reason to suspect anything up in that area other than maybe some decomposed petrified horse poop or something like that.
I'd feel comfortable moving along with signing the developer's agreement this evening and supporting Jeff's thoughts relative to the importance and the urgency and. Yeah, I would too. So Jeff, you're fine with proceeding right now?
I am.
If we see a problem, you guys take a look at it with a couple scoops and we'll go from there. I have no problem with that.
Two scoops for breakfast.
Well, are you guys ready to move on to the next? There is one other issue before you get the development agreement. If you have more questions about environmental, we can stick with that or?
Are we done with environmental? Any more questions? Nope. Next one. Thank you Vanessa. Good job.
The, the parking plan.
Yeah.
So I think I sent you the information from BMO Harris.
Right.
So I know the board wanted to hear your thoughts about parking for your construction workers.
Yes, so you know, three of us, Mike and Brian, I've kind of working on what's the best case scenario, what, you know, what type of number of cars would you need during the process, throughout this process? Better? Oh, jeez. That's really working. There, maybe that's it. So yeah, so we've been, we've kind of taken a look at the whole timeframe of construction now until the end to see what we'll need offsite for parking stalls. Mike's been having a lot of conversations with all the trades and basically requiring them to ride together, do some, you know, some ride shares. So plumbing, electrical, HVAC during the process, you know, they gotta snuggle up and, and come four per car. Where usually it becoming one per car, they bring their own truck. And a lot of those guys have their tools, so that's what they want to do and we understand that. But as a requirement of their contract, you know, Mike is saying, all right, you have to ride with your, you know, fellow employees. So that's part of it and gonna be reducing the number of stalls we need. Mike can park.
Just a second please. Scouts, thanks for being here. If you have questions, email those to Mr. Grace and he will get those to us. Thank you.
We must have been too boring, huh?
Environmental stuff's pretty exciting.
No.
We'll keep going with this one. So that's part of it and it's gonna be reducing the stalls that we need throughout the process. Mike and his team can park eight to 10 vehicles during the entire construction process onsite on, on the land that we control. And then from there, and we're not really exactly sure when, we think maybe during the July time, we'll need potentially up to, I guess during the whole process, we might need up to a maximum of 10 additional stalls offsite. Those are ranged between different subs, but thank you for sharing the, the BMO contact. I have reached out to them. We haven't spoke yet. But that seems like a very good option. And to bring anybody into the conversation on that, BMO across the street allowed us a number of stalls. We had configured out kind of a rental agreement or anything like that or term, but they have those stalls available. They have a very large lot. And not a lot of customers that they, that need all these, you know, they have 30 stalls. So they can give us the stalls we need if we need to. We're gonna agree with them. We're looking at two other sites right now that could also be a fallback if that doesn't go through. So I guess what we're saying is we have the stalls that we need on and offsite covered. We're just not sure exactly what the location will be because the agreement hasn't been completed yet. Once that's completed, we can share that with staff or, you know, or come back and share that with, with you guys if you want to see that on a map.
Do you need to reach out to the bank for you, Brett?
No. Yeah, I, I waited just until early, later last week to reach out, so.
You know, I think to elaborate on what Brett says too, we've, we've tried to look at the timeframe of the construction process itself. And really for the next two months, May and June, there's gonna be excavation trucks coming on and offsite. Not a lot of vehicles there. Really, once July hits is when the framing will begin and that's when we'll see more trades coming to the site needing to park their vehicle. So what Brett and I have proposed or, or proposing to the village is maybe 30 days prior to that need, starting in July, we will have some kind of signed lease. Our estimate in July through October is six to eight additional vehicles. Once some of the exterior work starts, really from October to December, that number can go up to eight to 10. Now, this is dealing with Mike as kind of a worst case scenario. If we had, you know, masonry going on at the same time as some of the other exterior work and window guys were there. So we've looked at a timeframe to, to break that down. And the worst scenario is when some of the inside work is happening, as same, same as the outside, there could be additional 10 vehicles needed with the car pulling efforts. So at, at this point, we don't have a definite lease signed. But what we were proposing is 30 days prior to our need, which would be July 1st, to have maybe a, we could staff level approval or lease presented of, of what our needs are expected to be at this time, so.
So how does staff feel about that, Jeff, Mike?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that. Yeah, I am too.
Thank you for doing that.
Sounds like you're ongoing good work to me. We appreciate it.
I did, Jeff and I have one other thing if we could ask. We did receive one call and I know that, like you talked about this during the public forum you had on this, that you're, you're able to move the construction fence at times. Would it be possible on the weekends to move the construction fence to allow those parking spaces to be used on Saturdays and Sundays?
All right, so here's what happened. The reason I moved them to cover those stalls is we had them, we left them so people could park there. Some kids removed the sandbags that we had holding them and one of them tipped over on a car and I'm currently being sued. So what I did, or I'm going to be, I guess, I don't know, the insurance company, I moved them to the end of those stalls for safety. You know, I, I can't keep guaranteeing if somebody parks to that fence, if the kids keep messing around. I don't expect 24 hour coverage there. So it happened on a Saturday night. What we haven't done is moved it further over yet. You know, and blocked off the driveway. We're trying to leave that wide open all the way through till the carpenters start. I could move them back, but again, if something happens, I have like 5,000 deductible and every time there's a incident, it's out of my pocket. I, I don't know what to say. I mean.
Parking's your own risk.
We had signs out that said no parking and, and they got thrown into the side. So this is an ongoing thing with urban construction and I'm used to it. I just don't know if I move those all the way back. I mean, I could, but you know, I, I mean, I, I had a guy come up and swear at me because we moved it. So I, I'm kind of torn between safety of the cars. If I move them all back and I weight them all down again, which we use 50 pound weights, I don't know what to do. I mean, I, I could do it, but you know, again, it just seems safer to have them at the end of the stall where if they fell, they wouldn't hit a car. I mean, I.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
But if, if you really, if you're getting a lot of complaints, I'll, I'll move them back. I mean, I, it's just, you know. I know how tight the parking is. And if, if it's a really big deal tomorrow when we're there, we could, we could move them back. It's, it's during the weekends that I have no control over them.
There's nobody there.
Right.
Yeah, and, and moving that, moving the fence can't always be easy, especially if it has time and, you know, everything.
I do it. You know, Jeff, the only issue would be the liability of the cars on them again.
Sure, sure. You know, I guess this is one of the things that we've anticipated going into this process, knowing how, how sensitive parking and, and everything has been in that back parking lot. The fact that, you know, we have a major construction effort going on right next door. We know that there's gonna be inconveniences. And I kind of look at this as kind of like a growing pain of just, hopefully it's temporary as, as people who use these businesses and who live there and who own there and everything like that work for kind of alternate spaces. And we continue to stress that across the street are plenty of parking spaces in the, in the municipal lots and everything. So you know, I think, we know you have to construct it and, and you know, you have to get trucks in and, and everything like that. We want you to be safe in doing that and not putting yourself at undue risk or liability because of that. I think the, the commitment that you've given from the get-go was you would, you know, make every effort to minimize disruptions, maximize parking spaces and have people there to be able to guide trucks and that type of stuff. And we haven't seen any reason why you're not doing that. So, I mean.
The one thing I can do is if they crab, if somebody crabs a lot, you get a lot of complaints, we can try adjusting them on the weekends again. I, I just, you know, and if somebody runs into them, I, I, I'm okay with it. If you get a lot of complaints, it's fine. I can move them back. If.
An effort will be made.
Yeah, I.
Just, I'd say this, this leaves him for now.
You guys can call me. You got my number. If you get like six businesses all complaining, then I'll move it back. And figure something out. I don't know.
We have your mobile number too.
I think you do.
I think I might.
I mean, in case something happens on the weekend, I can come out. It's not that big a deal.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, and.
I think we're okay with, let them go ahead and work with Jeff on this and what makes sense and make it work. If there are problems, we'll, we'll talk some more. But again, we appreciate your good effort at making this work. It's nice to have that happen.
I would also just, I don't, I wasn't planning on commenting on this, but I just got back yesterday and Jeff, I hope you noticed that one of the, one of the locations that they were able to haul material to was up off of South Prairie Parkway. They've done a very nice job placing that in a, in a rough graded manner. We still have to work on the two, the inlet boxes and, and the manholes going out of those, but they did a really nice job. That's materially, you know, have, I think it was kind of a good give and take because they needed to get rid of it and we needed it up there. So it was a great idea to use it up there and I think kind of nice to see that project get, get a boost from that as well. So we appreciate, appreciate your efforts on that.
Oh, we love driving that close, so.
Exactly. Like I said, I think it was a win-win.
Yeah, I was by there Saturday. I was impressed with how well that was put in there and looked like it made sense when they just dumped in a big pile. So.
Right.
Thank you.
So I think we're back to the development agreement. And the issue before the board is whether to approve the development agreement.
So are there any more questions on the development agreement? Either way, we need a motion going forward, I guess.
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you. Any further questions on the development agreement? Okay, seeing none, we have the development agreement for approval. Motion second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Did you get Jenna's name?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I wasn't loud enough. I lean in.
You'll probably have to wave at us down there if we can.
Yeah, you can. All right.
Thank you.
I'll do some wild hand gestures.
Okay, item B, Public Hearing for Oregon Ice Arena Incorporated, application for Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine license for the property located at 100 North Prairie Parkway. Now, this is a public hearing which I will now open. Have a good night Brett. Thanks. Thanks Vanessa.
Thank you.
Welcome Sean and.
Thank you very much for having us. We are here before the village board today asking to be considered for a new B and C beer wine license at the Oregon Ice Arena. We presently have a conditional or maybe more properly a restricted license to sell beer and wine at the Oregon Ice Arena. That was for use primarily during the Wisconsin Whaler Hockey Games. The season has now concluded. And we are hoping to open another way for us to generate some revenue by utilizing an outdoor space. But that, our current license does not currently include that area. We understand that we would, upon the board approval, be surrendering our current license for this potential new license and then be up for renewal right away at the end of June. I have spoken to Chief Yule about some of the security plans and potential future improvements and concerns that he has. And I, I believe we. and concerns that he has, and I believe we have things addressed. So, that's where we are at today, asking for the permission to have this new unrestricted beer, B and wine, C-class liquor or beer service license. Thanks.
Okay, so what's your security plan, please?
The security plan would be the current plan that we have in place with, under our current license. The main concern, I guess the main challenge for us will be for the outdoor area, if we are able to have that included, would be to how we would go about preventing minors from obtaining alcohol. Our immediate plan is to have the double fencing, as Chief Yule would prescribe to us, but for a permanent solution, we are looking to erect a six-foot-high chain-link fence around the entire perimeter. The challenge that we have is that it's costly, it's six thousand dollars. We would like to have some type of a fundraiser to raise those dollars. An additional concern is regarding cameras for the outdoor. It's something that the chief and I discussed and agreed that it would be a good idea to have those, however, we would also like to make that a part of a fundraising effort to raise the money to have those installed. We would not allow, we continue to utilize wristbands for persons who are identified as twenty-one by a security guard and/or bartender. We would, in the outdoor area specifically, have, we would identify people who are under twenty-one by some sort of other marking, maybe an X on their hand, or a plan that would be suitable to the chief, but that's, I guess, for the most part, we would retain the beer and wine on the property under this new license, in a, still in a secured location where it would not be accessible to anybody other than staff of the Oregon Ice Arena. And I think that all other conditions, we would be asking to be removed as far as the limitations and times and that sort of thing.
Questions, folks?
Mike, are there any fees associated with issuing a B and C license at this point? I'm trying to remember back to when we were talking about issuance of licenses, and I don't remember if it was Class A that was going to require ten thousand dollars or...
Oh, that's a combination, Class B, they're not applying for that.
There's just an application fee, which is what, like a hundred and... hundred bucks? So, it's about a hundred dollar application fee, but that's it?
The one thing I wanted to mention was, this is always the question of, you know, what comes first, the board talking about the liquor license, they're making them, the petitioner, go to the planning commission, because we, you know, this is, if they're going to be doing something outside with a fence, that's going to be a planning commission.
Yeah.
But for them to do that to the planning commission, there's a cost doing that, so...
Yeah, so...
It makes sense for the board to talk about the license first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with respect to the zoning issue, I mean, there are a couple ways to handle it. If the board approves the license, from an alcohol standpoint, and they still need a zoning approval, they still need a zoning approval before they can move forward. So, it's kind of an automatic condition, in a sense, that you don't necessarily have to address formally. You could, I suppose, in taking action on the license, add as a condition of approval, a requirement that they get any necessary zoning approvals within some specified time period. So, that's something you could consider in terms of how you approach that issue. I'll just mention one other condition that has to be not lost track of here. So, the Ice Arena has an existing license, subject to a variety of conditions, that, and in part based on kind of direction from village staff and me, the applicant has applied for a new license. So, if the application is approved or approved subject to conditions, one condition would necessarily need to be that when the new license is issued, they'd surrender the old license, because you can't have two. So, that's just kind of a piece of, kind of, housekeeping for this one, yeah.
Joe, from my perspective, it's much cleaner to talk about whether or not I'd be comfortable issuing a regular alcohol license to you, given the confines of the building. When we start to talk about serving outside of the confines of the building out there, in my mind, a few concerns that I have, one is it's probably one of the more rural areas of the village, so much harder to control. I had a concern with regards to Ziggy's having their patio used for alcohol, because it's hard to control the outside, but at least there, it's residential, and you've got people pulling up and parking all the time. And even at that, I still think that probably a fence would have been in order there. Out at the Oregon Ice Arena, I think if you're going to start to look to serve on an outside patio, I have a lot of concerns about your ability to control that area, and I wouldn't necessarily want to bring those concerns into the other question of whether or not I think you could manage an alcohol license appropriately inside the arena. And so, for the record, I don't have a concern giving the Ice Arena a full license to operate within the confines of the building, given the security plan that they've been operating on, because I think you guys have done a great job. Chief Yule wrote a very nice letter of support to attest to the work that you guys have done out there, managing the responsibilities you've had so far. So, that's the entirety of my thoughts on the subject.
So, you want this license just for the outdoor events, or you want it for all events?
For all events.
So, youth hockey, you'd be selling alcohol?
Potentially, but, you know, potentially, yes.
Yeah. So, I know that you need money, I guess, especially so with the school leaving, losing their rent.
Correct.
That's made that much more a difficult situation, but it feels like the Ice Arena is becoming a bar, and the board did not approve a bar when we approved that facility. And I, I mean, WIA doesn't allow alcohol at their events, NCAA doesn't allow alcohol at their events, so we're going to allow it...
NCAA does.
What?
NCAA does, you know...
None of us on campus.
Right, correct.
Yeah, so when NCAA team plays in a stadium or an arena that is not owned by the university, alcohol can be served. In most college venues, that's not the case, the college owns it, you cannot serve alcohol. So, I don't see how we would want to have alcohol being served at youth hockey games. I just think that sets a real bad role model for kids. I'm talking about that because you need money. I don't know how much it's a generate, how much did beers and wine sales generate in profit for the Whaler season?
About, I don't know, I think...
Our last working was like, I want to say about thirty, thirty, I don't know.
Okay.
In profit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that was total cost, so probably twenty, probably a little over two thousand.
Okay, yeah.
That was for all the...
Yeah.
Season.
So, how do you justify selling alcohol at youth hockey when it's not allowed at high school games by WA or college games by NCAA? These kids are much more susceptible to what they see than the older kids are.
Well, I think it's a very valid point. I mean, and certainly, we're not trying to make that the primary focus of the business is, you know, we're a facility that has, you know, in years past, struggled to get the bills paid, and, you know, we try to, you know, our goal and our mission is to make sure that that resource is available to the community, you know, for many years to come, and keeping the equipment updated and maintenance and running properly. The goal is not to establish a bar, the goal is to keep the resource available to the community, to keep hockey available to the community, and I think like any good business would do is to utilize any source, sort of revenue stream that you can in order to support the business, and that's the main, I guess, reason for the request, is to take a space that we have and generate as much revenue from it as we can. It's expensive to keep the ice frozen, you know, especially twelve months of the year. There are many Ice Arenas around the county that shut down for the summertime, you know, Stoughton, you know, various others. So, that is something that we would like to try to avoid, but certainly is something that, you know, the board may, this board, ring board may consider if needed. You know, I can't justify, I can't justify why it's a good idea to have people, you know, watching you little kids play hockey at eight o'clock in the morning and drinking a Miller Lite. I think it's a terrible idea. It's not something that we're going to try to push or pursue, but, you know, if we have a big green space next to our building that is sitting there empty, and we have the potential to turn that into some type of a venue that could generate additional revenues for the Ice Arena, and this is one way of pursuing it, then that is, that is something that we would like to pursue. We're not trying to stay, keep people out all night, we're not trying to stay open till two o'clock in the morning, it's never been our intent. You know, we're hockey players, and, well, I am anyways, and we just want people to come on out to our Ice Arena, have a good time, and go home. They can go to HQ or the bowling alley or any other bar around town once our event is over. We're not, we're not in that market, that's not what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, and I don't, I appreciate what you said, and I was pretty sure that's the case, I just have the concern about alcohol readily available at youth events. I can't find a justification for that. You said you need to look at revenue, any revenue stream to make it go, like any business would, I think it's a justifiable revenue stream, I don't think, to me, this is not justifiable, to sell alcohol at youth events. I might be eventually convinced to look at the outdoor part, and I have the same concerns that Jeff has, I think it's hard to police that, and you've got kids underage out there playing volleyball, and there's alcohol available, that's a concern too, and how is that going to be policed and taken care of? I think that's Jeff's issue, and it's a pretty much out of the way place, like he said, so... Personally, selling during youth events, that's a no for me.
Mr. Stent, if, I think that, you know, if, we don't, we want to keep our operation times as open as we possibly can, and I, believe me, I get your, I totally get your position. If it, if it's maybe a condition of the license that we wouldn't sell while a youth hockey program is paying for the ice, that is something that we could, we could probably be pretty flexible with, understanding. I just, it's cumbersome and challenging for us to, under the current license, to come back and ask, it's a burden that we have to take that other businesses who sell alcohol don't have to go through for each event that is outside of a set parameter of ours. That's what we're trying to, I guess, establish. If we have like the, that, we have an event like that, there could be other things, there could be adult-only things that are going on, it's, it's hard to say what's, if we are not able to sell Oregon youth, I think we're agreeable to that. I mean, like I said, there's not, there's no way you can justify, you know, saying how it's a good idea to sell beer at eight o'clock in the morning for a nine-year-old hockey game, you know, we're not oblivious to that.
Or ten o'clock at night for a hockey, youth hockey.
For, youth hockey doesn't play that late, so we're already no...
Heard from other trustees?
May also have a chance to address Mr. Brodero's, Budgero, sorry.
He's French Canadian, bud. I expect more of you as a hockey player.
Too many hard texts in the wall.
Right out of Quebec.
I haven't been to Toronto or anything too many times. You know, I think it's, you're correct, and I think if, if people are going to, you know, go to any length to do many of the things that are wrong that they do, certainly, they could find a way to throw a beer over any height of a fence. You know, being outside a little bit more rural, yeah, absolutely, that, there is a potential for that, but I think that we have, and we will continue to be as vigilant as we can against allowing that sort of thing to happen. I mean, again, at first, it would have to be relied upon for our staff to keep an eye on that sort of thing and prevent that from happening, passing alcohol over, from preventing minors, but as we are able to improve the facility to put up a higher fence, you know, there's all kinds of potential, we're not going to ever be able to stop all of the bad things that people could do. There's restaurants here in Oregon that serve alcohol, and they have an outside patio, and there's four-foot fences, and somehow, they're able to prevent that sort of thing from happening, and I think that we will be able to accomplish those same tasks, given the last almost twelve months' worth of experience that we've had. We've been in compliance with the compliance checks that have gone on throughout the winter time. I stood before, sat, I guess, before this board and pledged that we will follow the rules to the letter, that we have, you know, come as a condition of our license, and we have done that.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. You have done a good job.
Chief, do you have any thoughts on the alcohol, whether inside or outside, beer versus other alcohol?
Well, I think they hit it on the head. I think they've done a good job inside the building. I've been there a couple times and monitored that. You know, we spoke on the phone this afternoon as well. My main concern was how are they going to monitor the alcohol sales inside the fenced-in area? You know, they're going to use a wristband, and they're going to, you know, maybe mark the people that are underage, whatever, with a big X. My biggest concern is not the fencing area, my biggest concern is some underage person who's, happens to be playing volleyball or wiffleball, or whatever the field is there, that they're just going to, you know, readily have access to the alcohol that's on the tables or whatever it might be. And so, then we started talking about video and things like that, you know, obviously, I'm active in sports myself, so I know that competition brings out the best in us, and when you combine that with alcohol, sometimes that goes awry, so we want to make sure that we're able to do that, and that's when he's talking, you know, he mentioned that they don't have the funds for the video right now, and he wanted to do a fundraiser or something like that. So, those are my big challenges that they would have out there. I've spoken to some other establishments in town, and, you know, that's a challenge for them as well, and they try to do as best they can with the monitoring, with the identification of those folks as well, and so that's, you know, no matter where they're at, that's going to be a challenge.
Thanks, chief.
Yep.
For one, I'd like to delay or postpone a vote on this until possibly the next meeting. I'd like to have some time to think about this, now that I know what it is. Until these two gentlemen came tonight, I didn't know what exactly they were proposing, and now that I do, again, I need to reflect on this a little more.
And I think, Doug's not here tonight, he's sick, it'd be nice to have everybody here for this too, since it's a community thing, I think that would be important.
Steve, I would just like to make a comment. This Ice Arena has been going on for about ten years now, and it's a wonderful place for the kids to be, and I know what they're asking for, and I think, I'm not a beer person at all, but I think the way they do things, I think they do it in the correct way, and I would like to see this place survive, and it takes care of a lot of our kids, and even adults there, and it's outsiders even that are skating, and we just want to see this place go on, and I know there's problems of beer, but that isn't all our problems here in the village. Our drugs are just as bad as our beer is, but anyhow, I would just like to see the Ice Arena survive.
Yeah, and I don't think there's a person at the table that doesn't feel that same way, and we'd all like to see it survive, it's a good community operation, it's good for kids, it's good for families, and so on. We want to, I'd like to see it continue going forward and being a good, healthy environment for kids all the time, and I don't think, again, broken record here, but alcohol, youth sports is a good, a good idea.
I'd like to add one thing. I'm going to make a motion here to postpone this for another meeting. Will that work, Mike, for our schedule, to postpone for a meeting?
It's up to the board.
Okay, so if I, okay, if it is successful, it will work. I'd like to see a written security plan inside and out. plan inside and out. And if you could commit that to writing, but, uh, for the record, I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone further discussion and vote on this issue until, uh, a future meeting.
Mr. Bullock, um, on page forty-five, I think we have at least the, of your packet, I believe there's the inside, um, and there is some mention. Can you, just the outside specifically?
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Okay.
Do I have a second for that? I'll second that. So, further discussion, a motion second to carry this to our next meeting. Uh, as Jerry said, more time to think about it, uh, and more time for you folks to think about too. Also, if you can, uh, go with just having a restriction, it's gonna be for the outside events only, what that security plan is, uh, that's probably convincible. Um, and also, if it's Doug that we all have all stuff in, sure. Further thoughts? So we have motion second to hold this till next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that was four to two, right?
Yeah, Darlene and I.
So I'll bring this back in the next meeting.
Should I send that to Peggy to distribute?
Uh, you've begged me to give a candy, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go to Candy. She'll get to us. And not a, not necessarily a part of that, but also maybe, uh, uh, some strong consideration about how you do that camera part. I know that takes a fundraiser, uh, but kinda see what the timing of that might be. I think that would be really important. I know that's been real important at headquarters.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, I don't, I'm not on the board. Uh, it would very specifically keep me separate from that, so I'll have to lean on Jason.
Okay, okay.
And is there a timeline when you would like this to be turned in by sir?
Uh, we just need this in time for the next meeting.
Next meeting is May fifteenth.
May fifteenth.
So how about, um, so Brian, do you wanna look at it, the, the security plan before it goes in the packet?
Yes.
So, would you be able to get, get it to us, um, say like by the ninth, May ninth?
Absolutely.
Okay. Or, I mean, sooner the better, but that, May ninth would be less-
She forwards it to Chief Hill.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So, if they would like to hear that firsthand too, if that's beneficial. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. Anyone else wish to speak on this before I close it?
Thanks, guys.
Okay, I will close the hearing. And we'll go to item C, uh, public hearing for special assessment for public improvements on Elm Street and South Main Street. Uh, there's a note, that notice was sent on April seventh to residents. I will open that hearing. Jeff, comments here?
This is just, uh, kinda the next step in the special assessment process, um, as Matt probably explained, kind of with the final assessments. Um, just to, to remind everyone, um, we assessed, uh, we can assess all sorts of things, including curb and gutter, driveway aprons, sidewalk, um, it kinda goes all over the board. What the village board, and, and I think is a good, good plan, is to assess one half of the cost of the sidewalk replacement, um, considering that the curb and gutter is really publicly used all the time, and the aprons were just kinda part of what needed to be done. We did that mostly because we wanted the uniformity of requiring concrete aprons, uh, for all those locations. It was done very nicely. I think it looks really good. The, the grass is coming in this year, and, uh, it's really looking nice out there. So, what you see below is the, or what you see of this is the cost for one half of the sidewalk. If a person or if an entity was on, um, a corner lot, we actually take one half of the longest side of that. If it just, it only affects one or two properties along this project.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak during this hearing? Okay, I will close the hearing then and go to item three, discussion of possible action resolution number seventeen dash zero eight. Uh, the final resolution leaving special assessments against benefited property on Elm Street and South Main Street reconstruction. And the recommended motion is to adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero eight.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or discussion here? Okay, so the motion second to adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Item four, village attorney and village administrative report. Uh, there's a note that the revised downtown's dumpster, dumpster license agreement will be available at the May fifteenth board meeting. And then item B, discussion of possible action regarding Lincoln Road water tower lease. Uh, recommended motion is to approve the tower and ground space lease and memorandum of lease with Madison Cellular Telephone Company.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments you need to make here, Jeff?
This has been a long road. Um, and I think the only reason it's mostly been a long road is, is this is our first lease of this type. Um, we, hopefully in a future tower, we can accommodate those. Um, but, uh, we've been working with, um, US Cellular. Holly has spent a considerable amount of time on this and has done a great job in getting us to the point where we're protecting our interests, we're protecting our property. There were a few little bumps at the very end as far as, uh, just one, the, with US Cellular wanting really to make sure that if we were, if we were, say, a negligent landlord, um, and not fixing something, that they had the right to be able to come in and protect their interests and everything. But, uh, in general, um, I believe Holly worked good, right?
Yeah.
At least when everything, um-
Sorry, Matt was interrupting her.
Right, that's, that was my fault.
Um, I can just, if you guys want a quick overview of the lease, I can give that to you. Uh, so you have two documents in front of you. You have the tower and ground space lease, which gives you the more substantive terms of the relationship with US Cellular. And then you have what's called a memorandum of lease, which is something that you would then record. Um, it's kind of a summary of the actual lease, but it gets recorded, and so it's something that's, um, in public record and things like that, with the register of deeds. So, the, the main terms, uh, of the lease is first, the village grants an option to US Cellular, uh, so they don't actually go right on the tower right away. They have some time, uh, to exercise what's called an option to lease, and they pay the village an initial fee of one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and that's for eighteen months. They can exercise their right to lease the tower at any time. So they would put their equipment, um, on when they exercise the option, and then they can extend the option for an additional six months, and then they would pay an additional, uh, flat fee of, uh, one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So in the case that they exercise, um, the option to lease, that's when they would actually put their equipment on the towers. That would be like antennas, um, that we have a site plan that details where those would go, what, what type of antennas, things like that. And then you also have, um, they would also lease some space on the ground for, um, cables and equipment to help service the actual, uh, antennas on the tower. So there's kinda two, two parts of the lease. So once they, uh, uh, exercise the lease option, it would be a five-year term for one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, and it would be an automatic renewal for five terms of five years. And there are some details in the lease about if, if US Cellular wants to get out of it, if the village wants to get out of it, and I can answer people's questions if they have, um, if they have questions about specific details. And then every single year, the rent would go up by three percent. Uh, and as Jeff said, this lease leaves open the village's ability to rent to other cellular companies or any other person that would wanna rent the tower. That's pretty much the big overview of the lease.
Thank you.
We don't anticipate them waiting long. In fact, I believe they want to pull the building permit tomorrow.
Oh.
Isn't that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or comments over here? Okay, seeing none, we have the motion second to approve the tower and ground space lease and memorandum of lease with Madison Cellular Telephone Company. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And, uh, just a note relative to registering the tower and that falling to the, to us, is that right?
What?
Well, that, that we will register the tower with the FCC and the FAA. I don't know if we've done that, or if we typically have ever, if this has ever come up before in the village.
Has not come up before.
So that's something you're gonna wanna look into, and that you're gonna wanna do relative to the lease?
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, I think I talked to, uh, the US Cellular representative way back in the, in when, when we first started this, and he probably, he was willing to walk through the village to that kind of process. So I'll reach back with him if needed.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so item C is that we go to item, agenda item number ten, A, four and six. It's on page five. So, we've got item four, discussion of possible action on preparing a dangerous animal ordinance. Uh, recommended motion authorize village attorney and village staff to prepare a dangerous animal ordinance.
Um, Holly's gonna work on this, and I thought we should just take a minute to kinda give you a big picture sense of what we need to do, if that's-
Okay, so it sounds like from the chief, there was some reports of animals attacking other animals, and, uh, he brought this to Mike's attention, uh, as to whether the village has any sort of ordinance that would address such a situation. Uh, and I, and the village does have sort of general dog and cat ordinance, and it's in, um, chapter twelve oh four, s- uh, six. And, uh, it only addresses situations where a dog or cat would attack a person. So we would have to amend the ordinance to include other animals, and the chief, chief also introduced, um, I think Middleton's ordinance, which-
Yeah.
We can look at that. I, I've done other types of ordinances. It could be, you can make it as complicated or as simple as you can. There are some state statutes that talk about, uh, when you would terminate an animal, uh, but those only apply to dogs. So the village has some discretion here as to the policy that they wanna put in place about how you wanna handle dog-on-dog or animal-on-animal attacks or animal-on-person attacks.
Yeah, so I think the process, unless the board wants to do something different, what we thought was, uh, that Holly could work with staff initially on kind of outlining what your options are and putting together a draft to bring back to maybe public safety or the board directly. I don't know.
Do you want to come back to committee or the board?
Isn't there, I mean, another community that has already done this that we can copy or work from, instead of reinventing the wheel here?
Well, there are, as, there are a number of communities that have done, different, taken somewhat different approaches to the issues. So I think the question is, how do you wanna proceed? Do you want to have Holly come and meet with the committee first and talk about, this is how they did it in Middleton, this is how they did it in Sherwood Hills, this is how they did it in, I know Holly's had worked on at least one of these, so-
Yeah, everybody does it a little differently based on, um, sort of the concerns of the particular community and how severe or harsh, uh, you wanna be with your animal bites.
I mean, for me, I guess I'd be happy if you wanted to work with chief on this, and then bring your recommendation to the committee or to the board, whichever.
Yeah.
I guess, again, I have a question for the chief. Just how much of a problem is this in the village?
Well, let's say you, your dog got attacked by another dog, and you, you had to put your dog down.
Right.
That, that's where this is coming from? So, uh, one or two or three, that's a matter of opinion. I mean, it happened in the village.
It did.
A dog attacked another, another dog, and they had to put it down. So, um, you know, I, I think it's a problem. We don't have a, an ordinance that addresses it, um, and that's why I brought it forward.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Doesn't happen often. When it does, we should have some control of it, I think.
Yeah.
There should be a consequence.
Could we see a, you had mentioned that you can kinda customize these ordinances, however, could we see some examples of the variety that this can take? Just 'cause, I mean, I read the Middleton one. It seemed to just refer back to the state statutes, and I read the Dane County one, which is very specific and, um, I'm curious what else, what other options are out there.
Sure.
I, I think we also, I mean, in this process, and I don't know if this dovetails in with this or not, but Candy and I have spoken, well, about a month ago, on the fact that the village ordinances are, are pretty out of date when it comes to animals in general, dogs, cats. Um, and, you know, when our ordinances are written, it was not envisioned that people would have pet pigs or, uh, goats or, you know, and there's these questions we get very regularly. Um, chickens is another one of them, and, and all of these things kind of come in here, and there's, there's some, there's been some question as far as how many dogs and how many, we, we say nothing about the number of cats, I believe. So-
Right.
Could, could this all be in a pet ord, in a, a municipal animal ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, our, uh, we have, at our office, addressed bees and beekeeping, chickens, cats and dogs, pigeons.
Yes.
Um, so we've done quite, and urban agriculture is really something that is happening all over the place. So, it's really a question of how, what you want us to work on. If you wanna try and take a bigger approach and like, look at urban agriculture and pets both, or just look at pets and just look, or, you know, whatever you guys wanna do.
Yeah, I've started a folder that is just on this, is one of these things, is I, is I've received a few questions, and I've, and both Candy and I've agreed that I think we're a little behind the ball on this one. I've kinda started a feeling like, okay, well, these are some sample ones that we've seen, or areas that we think we are lacking. Uh, but I didn't, I didn't know if it really, I, I would think it would come also dangerous animals, like, 'cause a dangerous animal could also be a rabbit, goat, or something like that, or a pet raccoon, or-
Pigeon.
Well, wasn't that one goal that, uh, that it hit the national news, uh, with regards to wild animals being kept in private zoos out west? So-
Right.
It's not beyond the pale that somebody could decide they're gonna adopt a bobcat or-
Leopard.
A wolf that they find injured somewhere, and, and they're gonna try to raise it in their backyard.
Well, more common is the exotic pets, like you said, like the lizards, the snakes and things like that, that people probably already have, and we're just not aware of, so.
I, I, I like the idea. My husband and I actually have chickens, and, um, when we were making the decision to get them, we looked at the village's website for ordinances, and there was no guidance. So we just kinda followed the county ordinance-
Correct.
-instead, in hopes that that's, was gonna be good enough. But, um, you know, we were really winging it, so.
Yeah, we, the only thing with chickens we have is, is, uh, you can't, I believe you can't have a rooster. I believe that's the only requirement I think we have, uh, 'cause of the noise.
Yep.
It falls under noise nuisance. Um, but-
So it, so how these things normally come up is something happens, right, and then we look at the ordinance and, and then we figure out we don't really have an ordinance that covers that. So, um, you know, if you wanna make this all encompassing, we can certainly do that, um, but I guess that's important, what you wanna do.
So, go ahead. I'd like to rely on the, uh, decision of the staff, what they'd like to bring forward. I mean, you have a better idea of what kinda animals are in the village, and probably have an even better idea of what you'd like to also include, that maybe in the village in the future, so.
Yeah, I'm along that line too. I see you having Holly meet with Brian and kinda work on the dangerous animal ordinance and a draft to come forward, and then have Brian and Jeff work on other priorities, and the order you think of their priority, and see what we wanna work with, coming through the public safety committee.
And I do think, um, I'm gonna disagree with Doug, Doug, Jerry, a little bit, uh, in that I, I believe we need to be proactive with the type of community that we wanna live in, as opposed to being reactive, um, with what has or hasn't happened. So this I would see as another example, uh, again, just to disagree slightly with Jerry, where, you know, if, if we see that we don't have an ordinance, and we can conceive that there would be a problem down the road, I'm all for getting proactive with that to prevent a problem in the future.
And that's why I asked them to include what they would see, be, you know, having merit in the future.
Oh.
Yeah, I think we're all three.
Okay, maybe I just misunderstood. I just heard that one little soundbite of all has this been a problem.
Really, besides that, though, when we see box in our area, we see turkeys. The other day, I saw a turkey as it walked down the street.
But not pets.
Yeah, well, maybe it was somebody's pet.
No.
I don't think so.
I think some people do keep wild turkey in their, in their, uh, house, but it's a different variety.
You never know.
Okay, so we have a motion to authorize them to go ahead like we said?
I'll, I'll make that motion just to move this along now.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll do that.
Okay, so we have the motion second. Need for the discussion? This is, this is authorizing, um, village attorney and village staff to prepare a dangerous animal ordinance, and then Jeff and Brian to look at other options. So, is that a part of the motion?
It is.
Yeah, okay. Any further questions?
We don't have to wing it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then we'll go to item six. Uh, thanks on that Holly and Brian. So, this is discussion of possible action regarding amending the village's nuisance regulations. Uh, frequently asked questions and a sample public nuisance ordinance are in the packet. Uh, A, what does the board want to get out such an ordinance, and what does village board want to include or exclude in the ordinance? And then there's a recommended motion to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the village's nuisance regulations. So kinda the same kinda process, but items A and B, what do we- So, kinda the same kinda process, but items A and B, what do we wanna get out of it and what do we want to include or exclude in the ordinance?
I'd like to make the motion for discussion.
Okay. And that motion is to direct them to prepare an ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And then my comments, I think I, I'd like to pitch it back to, to chief and ask him, you know, really, ordinances are only as good as the enforcement. So, what, what do you think we should include, what's enforceable, and what needs to be there versus throwing, you know, throwing everything in the kitchen sink in there and then you can't enforce it?
Yeah, so, in the committee meeting, I put, I gave some packet information out regarding ordinances and nuisance premises. This really stems from another incident where we have certain properties in the village where we get a lot of calls at. And so, I think that puts undue burden on, you know, the police department, number one. Number two, we need to get some guidelines put together for landlords to be able to protect their properties and, and of that type of nature. So, I think Madison did a pretty good job of explaining why they need a nuisance ordinance. I think there are issues in the village that we can address with a, a better written ordinance. So, I think that, that all kinda comes into play on what we wanna do and how we wanna direct landlords to be able to protect their property. And so, that's kinda the, the direction I'm leaning. Again, it's, it's mainly because we do have properties in the village that, that require police and law enforcement there way too many times, and we really have no recourse to enforce anything. So, it really comes from a direct call response from us, so it'd be very easy to enforce based on the calls we get at a certain property.
Maybe Holly can weigh in a little bit, cause I've asked her to, at least by just kind of an overview of what, what this topic is kind of about on a big picture level and how we think we could move forward with the discussion.
So, the chief is right. There are numerous communities that have what are called chronic nuisance ordinances. Essentially, residences that call police a certain number of times, and I think Madison's is based on arrests. They would, not on calls, but on arrests. You would then, the village would be able to charge back police, the police cost of police services, essentially. And I did take a look at the village ordinances as well, and right now, what they have, what you have in place is just sort of the, the base general public nuisance ordinance, which if you violate a specific village ordinance numerous times, you have a chronic nuisance essentially, and you can abate that. And in these types of situations, abatement is a little difficult because it's someone's home. Or you're asking the landlord to deal with the tenant issue, so it can get kind of complicated. And so, these, these types of ordinances can have some issues if you don't draft them carefully. I know we did, I did do some research on one of these for another one of our clients, and they're, who decided not to do it just based on policy implications. You don't wanna, I think one of their policy decisions was they didn't wanna discourage police calls. But again, the chief, the chief has, Madison has one, and I think he gave the Fitchburg one, I think Semprary has one. But in my knowledge, I'm not sure if these are enforced. I could be wrong, but...
Yeah, well, they can, I mean, you, we can write them, so to speak, so we don't discourage victims from calling us. And I think that's something that we wanna try to avoid. But we also wanna make sure that we have an ordinance in place that if we do have a problem property, that we can handle that as well.
Do we have statistics on those communities that you cited that have enacted public nuisance ordinances? On how they have worked to abate the problems that they were intended to?
I do not know.
Is that something we can get?
We have some anecdotal information about, about this. Do you wanna share that, Holly?
Uh, well, I, when I did this, when I tried to do one of these ordinances for another community, I called around. I think I called Semprary and I called Fitchburg, and they had never, what they essentially do is they send the notice letter saying, you're on notice because of a certain number of calls, and then the call stopped. So, no one's ever really gotten a citation. It's more...
It's been a deterrent, correct?
Yeah, a deterrent. You're putting them on notice. I think the city of Milwaukee uses these chronic nuisance ordinances for primarily drug houses where there's been a certain number of drug offenses and they just empty the entire house, basically.
They shut it down.
They just shut it down. So, that would be, that's a little bit different context than what the village would be using it for, which would be more disorderly and things like that.
So, I think the process here that we talked about at a staff level earlier today is that, you know, assuming the Board is interested in exploring the development of some kind of chronic nuisance ordinance like this, we would probably work at a staff level to put together an ordinance that addresses the chief's concerns and, from our standpoint, at least, we think is legal and enforceable. And then bring it back through maybe the committee process and then to the Board where we could present it to you and identify, and you can have a discussion of what you think the policy implications could be. I think there are some kind of uncertain legal issues that, you know, we're not necessarily certain how to address with something like this at this point. I know that, um, the other, one of the projects that Holly worked on, there was a, the ACLU did intervene at one point and indicated that if the community moved forward with the ordinance, they, they intended to sue. I don't know.
It affects, it affects primarily people of color and low-income residents. And so, there, I guess there's a claim that it could have a discriminatory effect. Because what ends up happening is the landlords get cited and fined, and they, they abate the nuisance by eviction, essentially. And so, then you're putting a, a vulnerable part of your community, if that's how you choose to look at it on the street.
So, that's a, that's one of the questions that you're gonna have to think about as you do this. Is there, both from a policy and a legal standpoint, how do you assess that? So, we can certainly work with the staff here to put together an ordinance, do the best we can to make it an appropriate lawful ordinance that addresses the objectives, and then we can work with you all to talk it through, if that's the direction you wanna go.
So, one thing that I'm hearing now in the course of this conversation that I didn't necessarily pick up in the beginning is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but chief, I'm hearing you say that you would like us to have an ordinance to help you police the village.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, to me, that's very, that's very impactful in my decision-making, to know that it's coming from you and that you're asking me for a tool that you need to do your job. And it'd be no different than if Jeff asked me for a tool or Mike asked me for a tool. So, given that, you know, I'm inclined to, to, to want you to support the chief with, you know, all good caution and with a properly written ordinance that's gonna allow chief to do the job of protecting the village and take into consideration all the things that a properly written ordinance should relative to the impact on the community.
I think it all goes back to your point of what kinda community you wanna live in.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, this is one of those things that would help with those chronic problems and, and help us enforce those things.
T D?
I had a question. So, with the apartment building, you say that you have, you have calls for disorderly conduct, domestic issues, threat complaints. How many arrests do you have at that building for those things?
Several. I couldn't, I don't have the numbers off the top. I have several.
Is that something you could send out?
Yes, a month, yeah.
So, we passed a nuisance ordinance...
Well, you're asking me to pull stats out of an RMS system that doesn't work very well right now, so.
No, I'm not. I'm just asking.
No, but Jenna's not, Jenna's doing this, so she's, she doesn't understand our records management system we got going right now.
Okay, so, so can you explain to me what the nuisance ordinance would accomplish for this apartment building?
So, this, this would basically allow us to, like Holly said, put the landlord on notice and say, hey, we've been to this apartment building X amount of times this last month. What can you do to help us solve this issue? And again, it would be, how do we, how do we do this, you know, in a proper way where we don't discourage calls from victims and, and of that sort? So, a lot of times when some of these apartment buildings, especially this one, you have people staying there that aren't on the lease necessarily that are causing the issues. So, you know, you know, will it lead to an eviction? I don't know. I don't know what the landlord's gonna do, but I do know that there has to be some measure put in place for us to be able to control, you know, the community as a, as a whole, so.
But my argument would be if you're getting the calls and you're making the arrests, aren't, aren't you doing your job? I mean, if the nuisance...
But the problem doesn't go away. Just because we make the arrest, they go back.
That's human, that's human society. The problems never go away. All, I think, in my opinion, all that's gonna happen is the people being battered are gonna stop calling. And as a woman, that's really concerning.
I, I don't know that that's necessarily the case. It just depends on what the type of the incident's for. So, you know, if I'm, if I'm living next to that apartment building and I see the police go there and arrest and arrest and arrest and nothing changes, how do I feel as the neighbor living in that, that community right next to it? You know, do, is that a problem for me? Does my property values go down? What, what can I do to help solve that issue? And I think that's where we don't really have anything in the ordinances that, that could help solve that problem.
And, and Genie, we can put in the ordinance exceptions for certain calls, like domestic abuse, those types of things. Where they wouldn't count towards the...
Those are the things listed in Chief Yule's complaints. Disorderly conduct.
I'm, I'm just telling you that's something we could do in that community's habit.
If that was a concern, we could certainly say, okay, we don't wanna discourage, you know, victims of domestic violence from calling. We're not gonna count that call.
So, what I'm thinking is what's gonna, all that's gonna happen is the landlord's gonna evict those people and then try to get better tenants in, right? That's what, I mean, if you read any studies on this or any books, that's what happens. And then I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what that's served, other than those people are now, have no place to live. Know what I mean? It's like, it's my, it's the heartstrings playing on me.
You're, you're thinking, yeah, you're, you're thinking that these people have no means to go somewhere else. I don't know that that's necessarily the case. I mean, because they have to move from one apartment building, does that mean they don't move to another apartment building, somewhere else within the community, out of the community? I don't know. You know, that's not, our job is to make sure that our community is safe, that people wanna live here, and it's a quality of life issue, and that's really where we're at.
And I hear your point, but we just know statistically that if they get evicted or if they move somewhere else, that, that it is harder for them to find homes. And like, thinking of the Oregon area, there isn't a lot of rental properties. There isn't a lot in Dane County, right? They have like a point-two percent rental, like, opening statistic, so it's really low. And then when you couple that with the fact that there isn't a lot of rental properties in Oregon. So, we're, I, I see the point that we're trying to help up, you know, stop these calls from, or stop these things from happening. At the same time, if they do get evicted, they're probably not gonna be able to stay in our village. So, we're evicting our neighbors and we don't have, what are we gonna then do to keep them here? Because I like our neighbors. Those are things that are going through my head as we talk about this.
And let me hypothetically say, let's say it's a drug house. Is that someone we wanna keep in our community?
I mean, I would like to help them not be a drug house, that's for sure.
Well, that's the other end of it too, so.
I am interested to know what a body house is, too.
Prostitution. I looked it up today.
Body.
Body.
I think that was in nineteen seventy-six.
I, I still think we should find a way to work the term in because it's fun to have it there.
So, I guess the question is, does the Board want us to work with Chief Yule at staff level to develop a concrete chronic nuisance ordinance to bring back to you for discussion and deliberation, recognizing that, you know, it's clear there are some issues that you're gonna wanna talk about or do not wanna even take that step at this point?
I'll make that motion.
Well, we have a motion.
We have that motion, yeah.
And you second it.
So, um, thinking about what Genie and Jenna said, I certainly see that and agree that that could be an issue. But at what point do logical consequences enter into this? When people are involved enough to disorderly conducts and drunken raising hell or whatever, you know, at some point in time, there's gotta be a consequence where that starts to hopefully change their behavior. The problem is there aren't a lot of services to change those people's behavior. Consequences may well mean not necessarily do it, it may just move it. So, that's back to that, that same dilemma again.
My concern is they will stop calling or we'll just move them somewhere else.
Yeah. And that clearly happens both, both ways.
Yeah.
So, we've done it with, you know, something like this in the past. Rather than actually preparing the actual words, maybe we can have Holly, after she talks to the staff and Brian, just prepare a memo and sort of walk through the issues for the Board. Rather than getting it and preparing an official order, that'd be my recommendation. Cause if, if there's Board members that are concerned about it and, you know, typically we have first and second readings anyways of an ordinance like this. Before you can get to that point, I would just do a staff memo to the Board.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Does that work for the motion and second?
Yes.
Okay. Genie and Jenna, what are your thoughts?
Well, the motion's completely different than what Mike just said, so we'll have to deal with that.
Gotta deal with the motion on the table first.
Oh, we gotta go on that one first.
Gotta deal with the motion in front of you first that, that could be amended, uh, offer a substitute motion.
Okay, so we would need a motion to amend that, saying that we will go and start with the staff memo, and a second, if that's what you wanna do.
Well, don't we have to call the motion that's on the floor, or does it have to be repealed, or?
Well, you could move to amend it as well. So, the, the main motion is to direct staff to work with Chief Yule on developing an ordinance. President Staton just offered an amendment to instead direct staff to prepare a memorandum addressing the issues to the village Board. That motion has not been seconded yet.
I'll second it.
What?
And then if that's adopted, then you'll have the main motion back before you as amended.
So, here's, here's my, my one concern, is everything we ask Holly to do is billable hours to the village. So, I've read a book called Evicted, and I, you have too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, the information is out there.
You should read the book.
And, and we can self-educate ourselves to some extent, rather than pay a few hundred dollars an hour for Holly to educate us. So, that's one of my concerns, is being fiscally responsible with the money that we're allocating to our attorneys. So, I would almost be more in favor of delaying and bringing this back up at a future meeting to give us all a chance to read up on the impact of ordinances like this and eviction than charging Holly with writing up a shortlist based on her research to bring back to us for us to consider, to then ask her to go ahead and, and complete an ordinance.
Yeah, I'm fine with that becoming more knowledgeable. I just make sense.
I would still like, cause I believe she has greater access to different communities' current ordinances, and then Chief Yule has, once the system gets back up, the statistics, that I would like to see that data as well. Because I think that's important as we're looking to do that in our community. I, I mean, the Evicted has a lot of data in it, and of course, the studies that it cites has, has data. And we can look on Milwaukee's website to see how they changed the ordinances, I did. But I wanna see some of our more local communities, what they've done, the statistics on how it has worked or not worked, and maybe even what they would do differently if they're willing to share.
So, just in response to that, we can certainly provide to you copies of ordinances that other communities have adopted.
Right.
I don't know that we would be in a position, at our end at least, to provide anything particularly meaningful in terms of how they've actually been used or what difference they've made. I don't, I don't know that we really have access to that.
Okay.
Other than the kind of anecdotal information that Holly already just described. I don't think there's any formal database available to us where we can go and say, here's how it's been used and so on. Is that a fair statement?
To my knowledge, we would just, we would simply have to call other departments and ask, I mean, chief.
Yeah, they have, we can call them and then see if they have any data on that.
Is that, yeah.
Chief Yule might be in a better position than we would, call other departments and say, tell us how you've used this and how it's made a difference or not for you. I think, so what we, so we could, and I think you've already got maybe a couple of ordinances?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, I mean, Holly can maybe find a couple more, send them to you without comment, without amendment, without spending any real legal time analyzing, just, here it is for your information. So, we can certainly get that to Mike and he can get it to you.
That's helpful. You know, I would, I would also just like to mention, and with respect to my peers, because we just got done talking about how when I repeat myself, it's not because you didn't hear me the first time. But, but I do, I do just wanna say that, you know, I put a lot of trust and faith in the people that I have hired as a representative of the village to do their jobs, to bring their lifetime worth of experience to the table and, and guide me in my decision-making. And that doesn't mean that I'm necessarily gonna follow in lockstep, but I'm gonna have to have a compelling reason to, to not support something that you all are asking me to do so that you can do your jobs. And this also kind of brings back the conversation about the village planner and things of that nature. So, I don't feel like, I don't feel like I have a compelling reason to say that this isn't something that we should do for the village and that based on all of your years of experience in law enforcement and the peer group that you keep, that this isn't the right thing to do for the village. I do believe that there are consequences any time that you take a policing action, and I know that you know that to be true as well. And if there was a right way to do this, every community would do it the same way. It would just be boilerplate, we drop it and go. So, no matter what we choose to do, in my opinion, and that means whether we choose to not do anything with the ordinance and leave chief with the problem of having to continue... and leave Chief with the problem of having to continually respond to the same problem residents and drawing police resources in that direction, and the impact that that has on the rest of the community, or whether we choose to change the ordinance and allow Chief to police the way that he'd like to police our village, the only, to me, the only real certain thing is that I hired Chief to police the village the way that he saw fit, based on his experience and his knowledge, and he's asking me for this.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. I couldn't say it, I couldn't have said it any better myself.
That's one way to get me to stop.
What was that? What was that way?
So, so the last discussion was headed towards possibly tabling this matter to a future meeting, but that, then there was no discussion of when that might be.
Yep. Don't we have an amendment on table to vote on?
That wasn't seconded. The amendment was not seconded, was it?
So you have a.
I, I made the motion for discussion, and I thought Jerry seconded it, so we're discussing.
That's the original motion.
So I have, Jeff, Jeff and Jerry did the original motion, and then Matt volunteered Steve as making the motion, which I'm not sure he did.
For the amendment?
For the amendment, but then Jerry seconded it.
I second that. Oh, that's.
So we're gonna vote on that.
So now we've got that on the table. So, you could, given the current state of affairs, you could now move to table the entire matter to a future meeting, or you could choose to vote on the amendment.
Or you could adjourn.
Okay, motion for adjournment?
You throw that out there, we're gonna have a whole nother problem we have to deal with.
Yeah, no kidding. They missed that. So, I would suggest we table this.
What is the amendment again?
The amendment was to have a staff memo.
Oh, okay.
Plus time to go into it. Matt even carried that down by saying, having Holly gather a bit of information and get that to us, so. And then it's been suggested that we try to gather more information. You both mentioned a book called Evicted, which I would be interested in taking a look.
It's a, it's a quick read. You can borrow my copy if you'd like.
I would like to.
It's pretty thick, but a third of it is legal citations.
Yeah.
So, if you're wondering where they got their data, a third of the book is citations.
Yes. And Mr. Desmond is a good writer, so it's a good read.
How many copies do you have at the library, Nikki?
Well, at least two off the hand, that I, the library almost.
Nice plug.
Maybe more than that.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that, too, because that works really well.
And Chief, this is maybe a personal thing, but I'd also like to know what Lieutenant Pagan cop's views are on this, as a woman lieutenant in the village. I don't know if she would challenge you, but I'd like to do what she says. I don't know, I'm interested to see, as second in command, and as a woman, I think she might have a different perspective. She might agree with you, but I'd like to at least hear her perspective.
Okay.
Is that, is that fair, that I request?
She'll probably kill me now, but, I don't know, it'd be interesting, I think. At least I'll probably give her a leak.
There's a motion to table.
Not yet.
Two motions on the table, we almost had a third.
So does anybody want to make a motion to table this?
No, I don't.
I, I would make a motion to table to give us time to read up and think about this before we vote.
Yeah.
But I've already made a motion, it hasn't been voted on.
That's okay, you can still move to table if you want to, but.
Can I amend my motion to table?
Can you amend your motion to table?
Well.
Now, once a table, sorry. Right now, the motion on the floor is the motion to amend the main motion, okay? If someone were moved to table.
Oh, I see.
And that were seconded, then the entire discussion would be tabled to a future meeting. But if you're gonna move to table, please identify kind of when that future meeting date is, that you would like this to come back.
So when's a possible future meeting date, Mike, that we can come back to this issue?
Well, I guess, I should, we should get a second on the floor.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that is to table the whole thing to a future meeting date.
So you want to give yourselves how much time to read the book?
I would suggest the first meeting in June.
First meeting in June?
Yeah.
Be June fifth.
Okay.
Are you fast readers?
I'm a great skimmer.
Okay.
Jerry, why are you shaking your head?
Oh, if you don't know, I, I can't explain it.
You think we should just pass the ordinance?
I think we should do something. You know, we've got two motions, like, just sitting there right now. And we just entered, you know, started a third one, voted on a third motion now. And it seems like we're taking a lot of action to cause inaction right now. So, it, yeah, I, whatever, I'm, it's all started with the chief having a simple request, I thought, and, you know.
Yeah, but it became not so simple.
Yeah, a public nuisance ordinance is not a simple request. It just isn't.
I don't know what he was gonna bring back.
Well, there's a lot of examples in the package.
Yeah, I don't know what he was gonna bring back, so, you know, whatever you folks decide to do, I.
Can you live with us being put off for a month, right?
I can live with whatever you decide.
Me, too.
Good answer.
Still under contract for another few months.
Okay, square them, motion to table, let's tell it's in the table. Any further discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay. So that clears up the attorney business, right?
Yep, attorneys can live, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Always good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Steve, do we have?
Same to you, Matt.
Steve, do we have folks in the audience?
Yeah, that's coming up next.
Oh, good. Do we need the attorneys for that?
No. I talked to them before the meeting, but I couldn't move them up because we need attorneys.
I just want to make sure that he doesn't have to answer any questions.
So we have a couple of quick things, and then we'll be at your items, okay? We'll just get these off of here. Item five, approval minutes are a none. Item six, approval vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, in the amount of four hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and sixty-one cents for approval.
So move.
Jacket.
Thank you. Questions? Anybody?
I actually have a question.
Stay back, Jerry.
Um, oh, but Lisa's not here, but maybe, maybe you guys know. So the Tin Man painting, is, are we getting reimbursed for any of that through the fundraising? I saw it was for sixty thousand dollars.
We, part, part of it's being paid by fundraising, and part of it's debt service by the village. We, we borrowed the money last year for it.
Okay.
I think, I think we borrowed like sixty-two thousand, or something like that, last year. I, I can get, I can get you that number, I'm gonna wrap up tonight.
I just want to make sure that the fundraising got to where it was supposed to go to, and all the funds, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions on the vouchers? Do you have any, Jerry?
No, I don't.
Okay, so we have a motion to second, to approve vouchers, in the amount of four hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and sixty-one cents. Roll call, please.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Berner?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item seven is community input. Anyone wish, Judy, come on up, wish to address the board. I think you know the rules, right?
Yes, sir.
Isn't that what you said, Chief? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Judy Knudsen from the chamber, I just wanted to announce that we are going to have the Jefferson Crossing groundbreaking this Thursday, nine o'clock, May fourth, so please join us.
Nine o'clock on, on Thursday?
On Thursday, May fourth.
So we'll, we'll do a notice for the board.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Judy. I have eight proclamations and announcements, board comments. There's one here, board review Monday, May twenty-second, four to six p.m. And then upcoming meetings, May eighth, at this time, no night meeting is scheduled, May fifteenth is a board meeting. I have nine, eight, police report.
Steve can ask?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I've been asked by Dr. Busler, the school board's interested in having a joint meeting with the village board. And so could you look at your calendars and see if July seventeenth, or August fourteenth or fifteenth would work? One of those three dates, July seventeenth or into August fourteenth or fifteenth.
All of those work for me.
They all work for me, too. I, we're just picking a date. Whatever you and Brian put on, that's fine, I'm just picking a date.
Those dates are fine with me.
Pardon?
Those dates are fine.
So would you prefer, now, in July, most likely on July nineteenth, we're gonna have the joint meeting with the town on the, for the seniors, that's our summer meeting.
Okay.
So you just want to have.
That's on a Wednesday?
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't confirmed it with the towns, but that's who we're shooting for, so.
So it's July fourteenth, I don't know, and the day?
Seventeenth. July seventeenth at six o'clock, or, or in August, at six o'clock. So, um, any preference?
I'd prefer to have one meeting in the course of a week instead of two, but I don't know if you can push all of the agendas together, and I don't want a marathon meeting either, so.
So that would be, then it would be better to do it on August fourteenth, because that'd be, that'd be financed, and we typically don't, haven't had it. So, it'd be, so, wanna do it then?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do August fourteenth. And then I, at this point, we're still working on whether or not we're gonna meet on the nineteenth. And that, that would then, we may not, that may be the only meeting that week, so we'll see.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else for staff?
Six o'clock, David.
I'm sorry, any board comments? I bust my way through that.
No, no, the August fourteenth, the day, what day is that?
Mon- Monday.
Monday, okay, that's what I thought.
Second Monday of the, of the month.
And what did you say was happening on July nineteenth?
So July nineteenth, we may have our summer meeting with the towns at six thirty at the senior center, where we, we just have a information meeting about the fire district and the senior center. But I, I haven't confirmed that with the towns yet. We usually meet in July, that's just, that's a tentative date.
What day of the week is that, Mike?
That is a Wednesday.
Okay, are we ready for nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So item nine, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, police report, summary of major crimes from March twenty-third of seventeen to April twenty-fourth of seventeen, and you will see some of the disorderly conducts and stuff there that we asked about earlier.
So I'll normally go over this unless you have some specific questions for me on this.
I think it's a worthwhile informative report, even if we may not have questions, but I think it lets us know
Yeah.
a lot of stuff that's going on, and where it's happening, so.
Yeah, you're surprised to see all the incidents that we handle this.
Yeah, it's not routine stuff.
Yeah.
It may be, seem routine, it happens a lot, but. Any questions on the police report summary of major crimes? Okay, we're gonna go to item C. Sean Christensen is not here, I take it.
C or B?
Uh, we'll go to C to start with, since those, those folks are here. So item C, discussion possible action regarding disallowance of claim by the insurance company for Debbie Tennyson. Our recommended motion is to approve the disallowance of Debbie Tennyson's claim for two hundred Ash Street, Oregon, Wisconsin. So if you want to come to the microphone, please identify yourself. Sorry, that happens sometimes, they never go real fast.
I'm Debbie Tennyson, two hundred Ash Street.
Yeah, thank you. So if you want to explain what your claim is, and we've read this.
Okay, you've read it, so you know. So in two thousand thirteen, I had sewer backup again. At that time, my claim was disallowed because I was told that the sewer lines are maintained every, runs every three years, and they had been maintained within that timeframe. This claim, in two thousand seventeen, I was told the sewer lines haven't been maintained since two thousand thirteen, which is four years ago. So I guess I'm curious as to when these sewer lines gets checked, and how can I have peace of mind that this is never gonna happen to me again, because it's not the first time. Jeff?
Yeah, let me give a little background on this. There was, there's actually two claims in association with this existing backup on, on two hundred and two hundred and five Ash Street. The, the two thousand thirteen backup occurred, well, it occurred, and then equipment was brought out to clear that, and I'm not being crass here, but they, they, what came out of the pipe was a very, very large pair of underwear. And it was believed that that had caused, caused the blockage, and, and things had kind of gone on the way. We, we actually have a, a plan to do approximately one-third of the village every year, and that's based on the time that we have allow. It's not a, it's not a set schedule exactly, but that's pretty much what we, what Gary has kind of sectioned our village off into three years. There are certain areas that we have highlighted as areas of concern that we try to do more frequently, and this was not one of those areas. I did speak at length with the, well, I should tell you, following this last problem backup, we actually had the area videotaped, and what the videotape revealed was a pretty large root mass. And what happens is trees that are in terraces or in people's yards will actually seek out the water source, and this is a very high nutrient-rich water source that's going through the pipe. It actually will come through the joints of the pipes, or cracks in the pipes, or anything like this. In this case, it appears to be coming in through a joint of the, the pipe. And, and so you, you'll, in the video, you'll see the pipe, sometimes semi-obstructed, sometimes almost fully obstructed, with all these little roots. Normally, that allows most of the water and, and sewage to, to pass by there. What happens is people will flush down flushable wipes, they flush down toilet paper, obviously, rags, feminine products, that type of thing, which can build up. And what happens is this, it's unknown that this is happening to us until there's a problem. And that's where the insurance company is saying it was, you know, it's not a known problem to us. You know, in two thousand thirteen, had we known that it was a root problem, then that probably would have been put on a higher level of cleaning alert. But at the time, the crew that did that felt that the problem was this large pair of underwear, and, you know, did not necessarily flag it as a, as a high maintenance area. Obviously, what we know now, you know, our reaction is, you know, first of all, what do we do? And the first thing we did was get our new truck out there, do some very heavy jetting, and, and what we were able to show is, we're actually able to remove probably about fifty percent of the roots by simply just jetting the line and, and really working that area back and forth a few times. And, you know, our next step is now to come in and actually get the root removal tru- it's a cutter tool either in there, or we actually come in and we foam the line with a, a herbicide to actually kill the roots. But it comes down to whether we know there's a problem, and whether we've reacted to fix that problem. And, so that's the reason of the disallowance of this claim. And kind of the history of what kind of got us from two thousand thirteen till, till now. You know, we are, as a village, looking into, I, I've spoken with our insurance agent. There are policies out there that we feel, I think, are, are reasonable for villages to consider and to pass on those costs in rates that give a certain amount of backup insurance. We also recommend people talk to their own insurance companies to make sure that they have sewer backup insurance. And we would always recommend that people would maintain both, both types. But that's kind of the, the history on, on this backup occurrence.
So after we had the incident in two thousand thirteen, we did install backflow preventer on our property so that we wouldn't have the issue again, but clearly, that didn't help. I mean, it stopped, it probably didn't have as much as we had in two thousand thirteen, but we had enough that we had to have a company come in and sanitize everything. So we took measures to try and to, for our peace of mind, because it's disgusting. And it's, it's awful to have to, I mean, we're still remodeling our basement down there, it's a finished basement. And we've had to incur that cost twice now.
Sewer backups are unpleasant for anybody.
And I think, I tried to go back, I couldn't find minutes from two thousand thirteen, because at that meeting that I, we attended, we were told they're serviced every three years. Well, clearly, they haven't been serviced since two thousand thirteen. So that, and that was the reason for the disallowance of the claim at that time.
So what's your response to that, Jeff? That's a tough question.
It, it is a tough question. It, it really comes down to written policies. And, and written policies versus, you know, if, and, and what I was told by our, our, this Doug Detley, who's the insurance adjuster here, I believe, with the claims specialist, he, he asked me a lot of questions. He also interviewed Gary and said, you know, is there a written policy to address certain areas of certain lines? And, and the, the answer to that is, is no. I think that's something that we are taking steps to address. So, so there's certain areas that we would, something like this, that we should be cleaning probably every other year, you know, on a two-year basis, but honestly, I think, you know, if, if this, if this happened again, I, I agree, you know, it's, the, the problem is, is nothing can be done to prevent a sewer, a sewer backup from occurring, you know, a hundred percent. Someone could flush a diaper, or, or something like that down there. It goes down, it clogs the liner, gets caught on something, and it causes a backup. Nothing can ever prevent that a hundred percent. I was actually very happy that for a while, we had had zero, and, and I believe it was two thousand sixteen. And then, you know, now. And then, you know, now we've had actually three claims for that. So generally, this has not been a reoccurring problem, but when they do happen, I feel, I feel
Only for me, I guess.
I feel for, well, no, I feel for the residents, because, you know, from the resident's standpoint, they, it's not necessarily a thing, you know, when it's, when it's a problem with the residents is lateral. And you can say, well, you shouldn't have been flushing grease down for the last thirty years, you know, and that's, that's easy to kind of understand the responsibility. When it's out in the middle of the road, it's a little more difficult, because, you know, they may have not, may or may not have done anything, you know, to help contribute to that, but it comes back to, as a village, whether or not we are aware of that situation, of that specific situation. And, you know, this, I honestly could not, I could tell them that we were not aware of this, you know, specific situation.
But if it had been maintained within that three-year period, you would have known about it, right?
It depends on what, it depends on, you know, like I said, when the two thousand thirteen incident happened, it was just believed that there was just a problem with something, someone flushing something they shouldn't have.
But if it had been maintained, if somebody had looked down the sewer since two thousand thirteen, they would have seen those roots, right? And known that could potentially cause a problem?
The only, we don't, we don't have a camera, and we don't, we don't camera all of our lines every, every three years. We don't have that kind of capability. And actually, up until six months ago, we only had the capability to really do, I would call, limited jetting.
So what is a, what is a preventive maintenance? What does that entail? Because that's
The preventive maintenance is truly jetting the lines, and that's what we have been able to do over the years. But like I said, you know, we, we do preventive maintenance, we try to get to about, you know, thirty, you know, a third of the village every year. There are other areas that my staff, with their history and knowledge of working the lines and possibly dealing with other backups over the year, knowing their back of their mind, that, oh, that's a problem area, okay? That's different than if, if we had, you know, if we went out to somewhere, eliminated a plug, let's say a big ball of grease came down or something like that, we wouldn't really designate that as a problem area as much as we said we fixed the problem. And now, if it happened again, that's maybe would be, you know, reason for more investigation. Like we did on this situation, knowing that there had been a problem before, that's when we bring in the cameras and really, that's when you can get a very detailed look. And the root ball was so thick that they actually had to approach it from both sides, so they had to approach it from the upstream as well as the downstream side. And, you know, every three years, I don't, you know, I can't tell you that, that's information I
Well, I'm sure she went, somebody found those minutes, that's what we were told, so. I go back to that, since it's been four years now. And the other thing, we've lived in our house twenty-six years, and we've only had this problem starting in, what, two thousand twelve, thirteen? So what's happening to the sewer lines that now, in the last five years, it's happened to me two times?
It's the root, the root ball is a problem.
So how is that addressed throughout the whole village? I mean, I mean, would you people want sewer in your basement?
No.
Twice in five?
With you, my, we have sewer backup just about every April in my house, so it's not fun.
No.
In the village?
Yeah, Ash Street.
She lives on my street.
One, two, four.
Are they reported?
I don't think so. The companies we've had come out, just do what they can and move on. They scope it out to the street and then say, call us next year.
Oh, well, that sounds like it might be a lateral.
If you mean in the house, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, I'm just emphasizing the fact having sewage in your basement, it really sucks. No, I don't think ours is a village issue. Ours was a low-flow toilet issue that we put in our house. Oopsie daisy, they don't put that on the box, but, you know.
Believe it or not, we do not like low-flow toilets.
I learned that, yeah, but, you know.
Yeah, but
Stuck now.
And so what we will be bringing, I mean, this is a side note, but what we will be bringing before the board, and probably Public Works Committee first, is a proposal to look at. It's basically called a no-fault sewer backup insurance. And we've been given opportunity to look into that for about a hundred thousand dollars per occurrence or three hundred thousand dollars annually. The reason, that's the reason we ask people to continue to carry sewer backup insurance on their own plans is if a single occurrence happened and you happened to get it back up into twenty homes, twenty homes split amongst, or a hundred thousand dollars split amongst twenty homes typically won't cover if people have finished basements or if there's extensive damage.
So what I'm hearing you say, Jeff, is to, to Debbie's question about what's happened over the last four years, I'm hearing you say that, that it just wasn't done.
That line was, yeah, that line was not cleared and cleaned since, I believe, two thousand thirteen.
And that we don't have a policy right now with regards to how we're cleaning the lines to ensure that everything is clean every three years, but that's something that you're recommending going forward that could at least get us into the lines every, once every three years, which doesn't necessarily mean that something couldn't happen in between those times that would cause a problem, and to that, what you're saying is carrying the back, the sewer backup insurance as a resident, in addition to your recommendation to the village that we look into, no-fault insurance
Correct.
to help offset the cost when this does occur, is what we can do going forward.
Correct.
And then, you know, I couldn't empathize more strongly with you either. I lived in Milwaukee, and we spent a lot of money on the deep tunnel project, and I spent more than a couple of times up to my knees in my basement trying to get it mucked out, so it is absolutely miserable, and I empathize with you and your situation. And I hope that those things that Jeff recommended would at least address this happening in the future, minimize the impact on your family, and minimize the likelihood that it would ever happen. Do you feel that at this point?
Well, at this point, after twice now, and like I said, we took measures to hopefully prevent it from happening by putting that backflow preventer in our house, which it helped, like I said, some, but they got it worse than we did, and they live across the street from us, so.
Sometimes backflow preventers actually are working, but what happens is as, as a sewer in the street backs up, it'll close that valve. And, and then if you're doing laundry or washing or anything like that, or running a shower, that water will have nowhere to go, and sometimes that's the water that comes up as well. It's still back up, but it's, it's
We weren't home at the time.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, some people will say, well, we put that in and it still happens, it does, that's an occurrence where it can happen on both ways, until the height in your basement is enough to push through and open that check valve.
He knows we all look down and look away.
I know, right?
These aren't fun, these aren't, I mean, it's worse for you, but these aren't fun for us either.
I know.
I'm Pam Lund, I'm two oh five Ash Street. You know, as you were talking about, I know we've talked about that, and I know where you live on Ash Street as well, and that's actually where the sewer, the blockage started. So my curiosity is, if you have to bring in somebody every April, I mean, I can't imagine, and coming from my field of work, I schedule technicians to go out and maintain uninterruptible power supply for critical data. And you have to be on a maintenance schedule to avoid these kind of situations. I'm glad that you guys have a plan in place, but that doesn't help me in my situation right now. It was out a lot of money, and we don't even have a finished basement, but I lost everything pretty much in my basement. We were concrete, luckily, so we don't have a mold issue. We were able to bleach it out, luckily. But it's still, you know, I have two young kids, so, and if we hadn't have been home, how much worse could it have been? And it was seeping up to our neighbors, because we called the neighbors to the right of us at two ten, and they had actually started getting water coming out. But by the time we called everybody in and they suctioned it out, it kind of, it all went back in, and we saved it from occurring. So I guess my main concern is, I'm glad that there's a plan in place and what there is. I do have flood insurance for my home, but unfortunately, the deductible is kind of high on it.
Is it flood, or you mean like sewer backup insurance?
It's flood insurance, it's sewer, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we have that. I've talked to my insurance agent, and, I mean, we discussed this whole thing, and we felt that because the gentleman that came out on that day said, you know, if this was coming from your house to the street, it would be on you, but this is strictly the sewer line. Now, I don't know much about sewers, like I know UPS, but I would think that a pair of underwear wouldn't clog it the way that it would have, I guess. I find that
It was apparently a very large pair of underwear. It was actually kept for a while as kind of an example down there of instances that are brought out of the sewers.
And I can, I can
Trying to be gentle with this task.
I can understand that, but in the same, I mean, this is our first flood.
Yeah.
So it was, and we did get it worse, fortun, you know, unfortunately for us, fortunately for them, since this was our second one, so.
And I believe in two thousand thirteen, we were never told what, what caused the problem. I don't remember hearing that about the underwear. It could be, but I think I would remember that.
I guess, you know, the big thing is if it was a root mass, and I guess, you know, I understand that the pricing of a camera going through a sewer system can be costly.
Not really compared to
And it's extra outright, but in the long run, compared to what it could do, that's, that's why you have a preventive maintenance plan.
Right. You know, we have, and I don't know the exact mileage, and just in road mileage, we have over forty-six miles of roadway just within the village, and if I consider probably our sewer system is pretty close to that, and so if we're talking about having to camera that, say, every three years, you know, that's not a, it's not currently an expense that we have as a village been directed to, you know, to do. Typically, you know, a good, and we have, I think, you know, I can't, Steve, if the others have been on the board, I don't know how many backups you've dealt with prior to my tenure, but it's not a common occurrence.
No, it's not been a lot. It's been a while in my recollection, although you try to forget as fast as you can. It may well have been, I'm not sure.
Right, and, and we're required to keep track of that, and part of what our system has recently undergone, and all systems in the state have undergone what we call a CMOM or a CMAR, which is basically a, it's forcing entities, and I think we've done a pretty good job with this, not a perfect job, obviously, but we've done a pretty good job forcing everyone to maintain records of, and a plan for cleaning a certain percentage of your lines and inspecting a certain percentage of manholes, and because I think a lot of entities out there were really, were not doing that preventive maintenance or inspection. So now that's, you know, kind of forcing you to go through that, it does put you on a, you know, a schedule, but it's not a perfect schedule. And I know what you're saying as far as UPS, with UPS, you know, and scheduling technicians and everything like that. I would love to say we have enough staff to completely dedicate two individuals to spend every day, all day, going throughout the village. And, you know, we don't have that kind of staff. Maybe, you know, as we work towards our next budget season, we're gonna be looking at additional staffing as we move forward, and I think that will come up as things, but, you know, it has not been a a significant problem ongoing, you know, in the system. And I honestly think Don, Don, who was out there, as well as Amos and some of the other guys that spend time out on that, the trailer, now our truck, they do a great job with it. It's not perfect. And when you're running a, when you're running a pressurized water line through a, through a main, you don't see what it's encountering. You know, you don't see if it's root balls, or you don't see if it's a clog of grease or anything like that. The only time you ever see that is when you're watching in the manhole, and it happens to come back through, and hopefully you're sucking that out and into the truck. A lot of times, some of that's just pushed farther downstream and hopefully goes through the system, but, you know, that's
I guess I have a question on the maintenance. Like, I understand your maintenance is a matter of, there wasn't really a maintenance, per se. I know that when we called out the city, they came up and they lifted up the manhole and saw that the water was already up to the fifth rung. So to me, I don't know how quickly that flood happened up there and how quickly it occurred down here. I know that our basement filled up pretty quick. But to me, that's something that, you know, is a, maybe it's not doable, but something, you know, as simple as an area that has had multiple floods or more than one flood as if somebody, because he literally came up, looked at it, and said, I'll be back, shut it, and came back with another guy in a truck and started cleaning it out. He instantly knew what the issue was, so, and to me, what he was showing me by the time it drained down and what it should look like.
Right.
I don't understand how that can't be a simple task of people coming up and getting that. I mean, I get the cost and the staff, but coming from the industry I work at, there's little measurements you can take to prevent those things too as well.
Right, I mean, I think I understand your asking is, you know, could, I mean, could we go out lifting a manhole? Something like what occurred in your situation would have, I think, and I don't know how fast it, you know, really would have changed, but I don't think you would have seen that built up to there. Something caused it to lodge and block that, you know, and I think that would have happened fairly quickly. With, and it depends on the time of day, you know, if it's in the middle of the night when no one's flushing toilets or washing anything, you know, you're not gonna have virtually any flow in that at all. And it may, could have drained down. I don't, you know, I don't know, but as far as, are we out there popping manholes? And the manhole inspections are, we're trying to do probably about a third every year. So it, you know, it's like going in, it's like going into the physician, you know, you go in, you get checked, you get your blood work and that kind of stuff, but there's, there's a chance something could happen that's just not gonna show up on blood work, it's not gonna show up on anything they're asking you about. And it's unfortunate that it does, but, you know, you do everything, we're doing what we can. I think we can do a better job. I won't, I won't say we can't, because obviously, I think, my, my preference is our tolerance should be zero. But when you're dealing with a system that you just don't see, it's all underground, and, you know, we're looking more sometimes for symptoms of problems, and rooting those issues out because of those problems.
Some of this stuff wasn't loading on the packet here. I just want some clarification for both your properties, what the total amounts were that you were looking for reimbursement?
Mine was, I think there was an Excel document I had on there, everything broken down, about fifteen hundred, maybe?
Okay.
We ended up having to rip everything all the way down to cement, so my claim was for twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
How much was yours?
My claim was for twenty-five thousand, but we went all the way down to the cement walls. We had to take the beams out, everything ripped.
Yeah, and I don't have all that in my basement.
Since we didn't do that, we didn't do that after the first time, so since this was the second time, we felt we needed to start fresh.
So these, these come to us, you know, we've had a few in the past. I've been on board a long time. And the insurance company recommends disallowance because we didn't have liability, and we can say the same thing here. It was in our line, we didn't have liability, it happened, we didn't know about it, we'd known about it, we'd fixed it ahead of time, we didn't know it. These things just happen, so. But I have to say, one thing that, that is conflicting me a bit on this, that makes staff feel nervous, but conflicting, is conflicting for me on this, is that, you know, we're talking now about getting insurance going forward. You know, you were told, we'll do it every three years, and it's been four years, and that's a practice that happens, if it can, it doesn't always happen. It's not like spring and fall, it was, I think it'd be a different situation.
It would be.
So, so that, in my mind, that complicates it for me. Maybe that's just me. It wasn't easy telling people, you know, it wasn't our liability, we have to disallow it and voting that way. Didn't like it, but that's the way it was, but, but this, you know, saying, you're sitting here, it's happened a second time for you, Debbie, and now we're saying, well, we'll get insurance going forward, so that'll help, but doesn't help you a whole lot. That, that makes me feel more bad about it. I don't know what the fix is there.
Do they have any appeal? Is there an appeal process to the insurance company? Or do they just say no again? You know what I mean?
I'm sure you can appeal. I don't have a lot of experience with that, with dealing with the statewide. Peggy, I don't know if you have any experience with it? I was gonna say, I think you would always be given a chance to appeal, but I don't, I think it would, the appeals would always be if there's some sort of, something's being misstated in, you know, their, their recommendation here, and, you know, like they're saying, we didn't have prior we didn't have prior knowledge, and, you know, it's not part of any written plan, and I think that's where the, that's where the difference comes in. So I don't know if they would expect any kind of change.
It would be changed if, they would get different information from us, that we would acknowledge something, and, but even, even, I just want the board to realize, even if we have a sewer maintenance schedule, I'm not sure that per state law, and I'm not trying to be difficult here, it's going to change our liability, because again, you have to have prior knowledge. I mean, that's what the state laws, I'm just, so, and Jeff's right, I mean, you could actually go and clean a line, and in a month, that line could back up because something got stuck in it. So there is no sure thing here, which is why, maybe, this is when Randy Wade, that's why I remember it, was on the board, and we talked about getting insurance back then, but it wasn't as good as we're looking at it now. It's changed a little bit, so, that's why Jeff is-
So, my question is, I mean, you didn't have any prior knowledge, but in a sense you did, but you were wrong with what the outcome was. You thought it was a pair of underwear, when it really could have possibly been the root, and we don't know because you didn't camera it. So in 2013, you had an issue with it, you knew about it on our street.
I'm talking in general. I'm addressing the village president's comment about that going forward, we're going to have a sewer maintenance schedule, and my point is that even with that under state law, it doesn't mean that we're going to have a liability. I just want the board to be aware of that.
Okay, because what part of your comment was, we weren't aware of the situation, but you were in 2013.
We were not aware that there was, there was, but there's no requirement that the village goes and takes a camera in every sewer line. And that's, and that's the only way you could have figured that out back then.
Correct.
Correct.
But, so that's not done if there's, if somebody claims a flood?
You don't automatically just sue every line because of that. It's really not, it's not a, a flood is a flood, you had a sewer backup.
Okay, a sewer backup.
Yeah. We're not going to, we're not going to take a camera down every time that happens, or we're not going to take a camera down a sewer line because we think there's a problem. I mean, you, you're going to have to use some discretion in doing it.
So, to kind of, like, I agree, Steve, with your comments, and to my mind, if I did the math right, we approved a development plan earlier this evening that spent like over a million dollars to, for the opportunity to have residents come to our village, and here we have two residents who are currently in our village who have faced very real damage for a thing that potentially could have been prevented if we had kept up with our maintenance schedule, and so for me, I feel like we need to go forward with allowing claim or whatever, you know.
That's what, that's why the board's talking about it.
Yeah.
Because it's like two to three percent of the money, of what they're asking is like, two to three percent, if I did the math right, I'll put that out there, of the monies we spent earlier this evening. So it's, you know, not a lot.
If the board's thinking about doing that, I would, if you're going to do that, I wouldn't, I think, I think Jeff or Peggy needs to go back to the insurance company and talk to them about that. If you're, if you're thinking-
It's a slippery slope, right? If Matt was here, like, he'd be freaking out right now because of all the words he'd want to put in, in the statement to make sure that we weren't creating a precedent that, that then would put us in a box down the road.
Right.
I don't disagree with what you're saying relative to the importance of taking care of our tenants, or our residents. In fact, I was one of the biggest proponents about breaking up the sidewalk when I realized that we had elevated the sidewalk and water was running into the retail stores along Main Street, because I did feel like we had a hand in that. And I, I agree with you that, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we could have caught this root problem three years ago, but there's enough reasonable doubt in my mind that the root problem started small three years ago and got so big by now that we had to come at it from the upstream and downstream sides to get a handle of how much we were dealing with. So, I tend to feel as if maybe there's some merit to that. But I would want to be really careful about how we approach this, so that we were dealing with this specific issue and not opening up ourselves to any potential issue that would look somewhat like this.
And that's why I'm saying, if the board wants to go down this road, I would say, direct the staff to talk to the insurance company before you make an official motion to start saying, "We're going to reverse them up to this amount" or something, because there probably, there's probably going to be some type of waiver signed by them, you know, and it gets more complicated then.
Do we need to talk to the attorney also to see if we're subjecting ourselves, possibly be subjecting ourselves to future liability, bigger liability?
It just would be more with the insurance company.
Okay.
I think about what we did with Florida Avenue as well, you know, it was one of those random things where, you know, you couldn't necessarily draw a correlation and said, "Because this, then that", but there was enough reasonable doubt that perhaps there was some correlation between the two, and so we struck a deal that benefited the residents as well as the village overall. This isn't identical, but I see this as spinoff of that general idea.
Well, I mean, a big difference, I think, Jeff, is that was in the flood plain, those houses.
No.
And they shouldn't have been there, and that was approved in the seventies to build houses there, so the board decided to clean that up, but that's, I think, a significant difference from this, because that was flood plain.
And that was considered act, I hate saying that term, act of God.
Yeah.
This is not. That's why I was making the distinction. No, I was making the distinction between a flood and a sewer backup. If it's a flood, insurance companies will say, "Well, that's, you know, that's an act of God."
Yeah, but usually they don't, they, they won't cover that if it's an act of God?
They, they will, if you have your own insurance, but not for the village, you know?
Okay, that's what I thought.
All that money came out of the villages, you know, we had to find money to cover for that.
Yeah, it wasn't off the levy.
Nope.
Right.
I wasn't trying to connect the two.
No, I was just, I was making a distinction.
I thought you were, I just wanted-
Not at all. I was just saying that there's been times when the village has, has made, the trustees have made a decision to, to help the residents because of certain circum, specific circumstances that didn't really seem to fall cleanly on one side or the other, and that was just one that, that came to my mind.
Yeah.
But I get that there's-
And Stephen Jeremy remembered this, and this maybe goes back-
Vividly.
Four or five years ago. We actually did pay a part of a sewer backup, and that's what I'm saying, but I know when we, before we made that motion, I think this, the board had the staff go back and talk to, talk to the insurance company.
Yeah, and I guess if you need a motion-
Yeah, I'll second it. I was just going to make the motion myself, but-
Before we talk about that, a comment on that, on the Florida Avenue stuff. I mean, the room was a lot more full then, and it was intense.
I didn't mean to poke the bear, Steve.
I was, no, that's all right. I'm just bringing back great memories. I was up on the north shore of Lake Superior to hike on Lake Superior, hiking trail with my son. I got a call from my, "You need to get back here. We have a meeting tomorrow night, you got to be here", which was fine. I packed up and I came back, but that's a totally unintended aside here.
Well, that's not far from where we live, so I know exactly the issue there.
So, yeah.
I'll put that on my list of things never to bring up again, right behind dumpster.
No, not dumpsters, though.
So is that, does that motion cover nine B, C, and D? You want us to talk to the insurance company about all three of them?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
Like I said, we've, we've done that, I don't remember when, but we did it once before, and so I'm not worried about it. If the board wants to do is studying a precedent, but I know the insurance companies, there's going to, they're going to, they're going to have heartburn over it, but there's a procedure to go through, so.
Well, and insurance companies always say no, pardon me, but that's what goes, they're just really hard to deal with if they have any way out, it's been my experience. But I think we should try it.
Yep.
See what step it takes next, and that's better than going home with a no, right?
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
So what do we need to do?
We'll notify you. We're going to, we'll talk to the insurance company, and then we'll, we'll send you a contact.
I'll let you know.
And the new information is that there was a, an issue three years ago that we've, we found out-
We noted that.
That potentially involved the roots system that we're dealing with right now, which is much more massive. We just didn't, we just didn't know at the time that was potentially there. So that's, because you were saying you have to have new information to go back. So that would be the new information.
Yeah, right, they would, yeah, because their position is that, here it is, and in response to Junie's question, how would they change their mind? We'd have to give them new information. Not that, not that they changed their mind.
We've given them all that information.
I think, basically what's going to happen is they're going to say, "Don't do it", and then it's going to come back to the board, but then if the board does it, I think last time we had the, the property sign a waiver.
Yeah.
Sometimes when you have to repeat yourself, it's not that they didn't hear you.
So it's going to come back to us, more than likely, and we'll have to quit looking down and looking at each other and make a decision, as it boils down to, so much they perform. So I'd like to thank both of you for the respectful way you've approached the board on this.
Thank you.
That is not fun, especially the second time, and it's a mess, a lot of expense, and we appreciate that very much.
Better take a time out of your evening, come down.
First two hours were fun, weren't they?
No. I found it fun, interesting. My husband's watching this on YouTube right now.
Yeah, so we need to vote on that, to send that back to insurance. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that's where it's going.
Thanks, ladies.
So we'll stay in touch. Thank you.
We'll contact you.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on item E. Discussion possible action about waiving fees for Summerfest permits. Two thousand seventeen fees are two hundred and sixty dollars. Staff has recommended the board look at the permits and fees issued before you sign away the fees. Oregon Chambers okay at paying for temporary Class B, Class B and temporary fourteen-day operator license.
Well, if staff's recommendation is that we wait before we make a motion, why would, why would we want to entertain a motion tonight?
We wait. No, waive.
Waive.
Waive. I think, I think it did sound like you said waive, Steve. Waive. Steve's getting tired.
I'll try to enunciate more clearly.
Isn't this historically something we've done, being that the Chamber's a nonprofit, and that this goes to benefit the village?
So those two are seventy dollars, right, that we're going to waive?
I think we have waived them in the past. No, we haven't. No, this is the first time. First time request from the Chamber.
Really?
I'd like to know more about the fee for conducting a public dance, if anybody can allow me.
Yeah, that's been, there's been a bit of a joke about that.
And there's a dance inspector, but we don't have to pay him.
There is? Oh, yeah, there is. Yeah.
If Candy, Candy and I were talking about this on Friday, it's a term that needs to get changed in the municipal code, a dance inspector, so. There's no body, house inspection.
I was like, I tend to dance with my kids on the deck, is that-
Yeah, yes, we'll charge them ten dollars for that, yes.
I wouldn't think so.
This is not a Footloose community, so.
Okay, so we're looking at waiving a hundred and ninety dollars for the fees, right?
I didn't add them up, so.
No, seventy for the liquor stuff and a hundred and ninety for the rest, I think. That's two sixty.
Well, so the Chamber is okay with paying the lick, the temporary B and-
Yeah.
Okay.
But given that the Chamber's a nonprofit, and given that this really helps to boost the local economy, I'd be in favor of waiving all the fees associated with Summerfest up to the two hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that for discussion. I just would like to know why we didn't waive the fees that we, we didn't waive them all in the past.
The Chamber never asked.
Why didn't you?
I did the first year-
Did you?
When I was here.
Oh.
And, but I didn't come to the board itself.
Oh.
I had just mentioned it to staff, and no one really-
I don't remember that.
Yeah, no one really said anything until we were start, Peggy and I were kidding about the dance, and I'm going, "So what is this money?", you know, and that's what started it. And then Glenn, Glenn Smeier, chief, and he said he'd be glad to waive the fireworks permit, because he, I guess, would get that money, and he said he thinks it's a great thing for the community, so he'd be glad to waive the thirty, or the twenty-five dollars.
So Judy, which ones did you not ask to be waived?
The seventy dollars, we're more than glad to pay for the liquor license. We're okay with that.
Why would you pay for that, not the others?
Yeah.
Because there's work, a lot of work behind it for him. You know, I'm trying to be on the good side of the, no.
He has a lot of time.
Okay, then, then-
Not anymore, I gotta do all this research.
But you know-
I gotta read a book.
But if you're willing to do it, I love Jeff's comment where he would waive all of it, that would be wonderful, too.
Well, that's the motion.
So all, all the fees.
Okay. Up to two hundred and sixty dollars, so I don't, I don't know what else might be in there.
Fees up to two sixty. That's the motion.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think that, I think that covers-
Any further discussion or questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We'll commend Chief Yule ahead of time for all of his work.
Fifty-two days to sign up to volunteer. It's out on our system.
Thank you for all the work you put into that event.
Okay. Item F, notice of road closure on Jefferson Street, starting in May two thousand seventeen for water main replacement. And that's May fourth, right?
That is May fourth. That's still on schedule, so, yep.
It's coming right up.
I did speak to Dane County this morning, and they plan to have the flashing signs out notifying in, by midweek this week.
Okay. Item G, discussion possible action on two thousand sixteen budget amendment. Recommend a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen budget amendment three, transferring funding from general fund balance to fund for fourteen capital equipment. This amendment still allows the village to have a twenty-five to thirty percent of fund balance in the general fund. That's an ordinance we have to follow, so we need that motion, please?
So move. Second, for discussion, Mike, why are we taking this from fund balance?
We've done this in the past. So this is, this is, I hate using the term, but this is surplus fund balance in the general fund.
Okay.
And we transferred it into capital equipment to allow us to buy small equipment versus having to borrow for it.
Okay, so it's a, been a practice, I guess what I'm hearing is it's been a practice to take the excess funds and use it for equipment purchase.
It's like getting a tax refund. It's a tax refund, right?
So, is it like, is it actual surplus money, or is it just unbudgeted funds that you're-
So you, you have a two twenty sixteen budget, and at the end of the year, you create a fund balance because it's, you haven't spent that money.
Okay.
So you, we have a, it's actually a resolution, and, so the resolution the board adopted years ago that we have to have a fund balance in there, twenty-five to thirty percent of general fund operations, and by even, by taking this money out, we still, we still are within that range.
And that fund balances for emergencies, like when that tornado hit Stoughton a few years ago. That allows you to recover from those, and not go belling up.
Like a savings account.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Any further questions? So we have the motion to approve that budget amendment three. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, discussion of possible action, proclamation for National Police Week two thousand seventeen. The motion is to approve that proclamation designated May fourteenth through twenty-second two thousand seventeen as Police Week in Oregon, Wisconsin.
So move.
I'd second it.
Do I get to read the proclamation?
Well, I think we should read it, but I think we should go around the table. So I'm going to start and go this way, okay?
Wait.
Are we all ready?
What, are we reading sections?
No, hang on.
Yeah, we're going to read sections, like where it says whereas.
Okay.
So I'm going to read the first line, "To recognize National Police Week in honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy." Jury?
Whereas, there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Oregon Police Department.
Whereas, some fifteen thousand four hundred and eight assault against law enforcement officers reported in two thousand sixteen, resulting in approximately four thousand four hundred and fifty-three injuries.
Fourteen thousand, yeah.
What, what did I say?
You said four thousand, fourteen thousand four fifty-three.
Sorry. I gave you a lot.
Whereas, since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. This includes Officer Michael Joseph Ventura of the town of Salem, Department of Public Safety, and Deputy Dan Thomas Glaze from the Rust County Sheriff's Office, and Adam John Hartwig of the Ozaki County Sheriff's Office. There were a hundred and thirty-five officers killed nationwide in two thousand sixteen, which was a ten percent increase from two thousand fifteen, when a hundred and twenty-three officers were killed.
Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC.
Whereas, three hundred and ninety-four new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. One hundred forty-three officer, officers from two thousand sixteen, including Officer Ventura and Deputies Glaze and Hartwig, and two hundred and fifty-one officers who had fallen in previous years.
Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, funds twenty-ninth annual candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May fourteenth through twentieth.
Whereas, May fifteenth is designated as the National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the honor of all fallen officers and their families.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Oregon Village Board formally designates May fourteenth
through the twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, as Police Week in Oregon, Wisconsin, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was nice.
And I wanted everybody involved to show the respect we have for you and your department.
I appreciate that. That was well done.
Good. So now we need, we got a motion, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we need to vote on that. Since we're right, we have to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
The voters, thank you. Again, thanks, Chief, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Item I, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Oregon Observer's Request to Waive Community Room Rental Fees for Community Editorial Board Meetings.
So here's my only question about this, Mike.
Yep.
Is Oregon, I'm gonna follow a train of thought here. Is the Oregon Observer a for-profit?
Yes.
Yes.
Would you waive community room rental fees for any for-profit that came and requested it?
I can't waive it. That's why it's in front of the board.
Would you recommend the board waive community rental fees for any for-profit that requested it?
It depends on the circumstance. If somebody was in, wanted to reserve a room to sell insurance, no, I wouldn't do that.
And so what are the circumstances here that you feel are noteworthy, that you would bring it to the board?
Well, I would bring anything to the board if somebody asked me to do it. And so when Jim asked me about it, I said only the board can waive it. I'm gonna tell you what Jim said. Jim feels like it's something he's doing for the community. And I did ask him how many times he would need the room. He said about six to eight times a year. So I see it a little bit differently than, if you're asking my opinion, than somebody who's coming in trying to sell insurance or something like that, you know? But it's truly, you know, I don't have the authority to waive the fees, so that's why it's in front of the board.
Do you know, are these gonna, do you know anything about it, like the format? Is he gonna ask for public input or is this just like newspaper staff meetings?
No, this is, he's asking people to show up, the community.
Okay, so community input.
Yeah, oh yeah, if it was a staff meeting, that'd be completely different.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, good question. Thank you.
They're also our official newspaper for the village.
Yeah, yeah. But no, yeah, they're asking community persons to sit in the meetings and, yep.
Well, I don't have a problem making the motion to allow it, given what you've said. So I'll make that motion to allow it.
I'll second it.
Yeah, once I heard us to gather information from the public in Oregon, then that seems fine.
I'll make sure that that was my understanding.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
You talked about...
Is this just general issues that...
I know, Jerry, I'm not sure.
Okay.
If the board wants more information, I can certainly ask him or, you know, or the observer to write an email to me, but my understanding is, and other communities do this, basically responding to your question, that he asks community members to sit in and, isn't it like the act of editorial board?
So I think we said that we were okay with it if the community is involved, right?
Yep.
So if he can justify that going forward, then we're okay. Is that all right?
Yes.
He's probably watching the meeting, so I'll talk to him.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, finally, you sat here longer than other council members. Library Director's Monthly Report, please.
So in your packet, you have lots of charts and graphs, and some of them are in color and some of them aren't, so they might be a little bit hard to decipher, but I'm not going to belabor those for you. So I will ask if you have any questions relating to that information.
Do we have these in our packet?
Yeah.
I couldn't find it in the packet.
I couldn't either.
What?
I've got it on my screen.
I have it on my screen, but I don't remember reading it.
But it's not on the...
I don't even have it as an item on my screen.
How did that happen?
It's not on the agenda list to the right. It's not on that.
You have to scroll down to the agenda list. That's how I found it.
Sorry about that.
To the agenda list?
Like the table of contents? I found that by accident, by the way.
Is it out of order?
I do know that it wasn't all in color in the version that was on the website. I don't know.
I have a page on my screen that says nine J OPL program attendance with a graph with...
Okay, I did find it, but it doesn't have a number on it and it's not in the table of contents. Okay.
Oh, it's, that's right. Sorry about that. She forgot to footnote or, yeah, or footnote it. It's on the screen.
Footnotes.
Not me, not me.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, after that confusion, now you're up. We're no longer confused.
So now that you've had plenty of time to review those charts and graphs and numbers, do you have any questions on them? I'm not going to go through them all right now, but since it's been a long meeting. But I will share some other fun tidbits with you. We have volunteers that come into the library to help us with a number of different things every month, and we keep track of how much time they put in. And for the month of April, four thousand seven hundred and sixty minutes of volunteer time, or seventy-nine hours, were put in by community members. And that is not including the friends of the library who put in seven thousand five hundred minutes or one hundred and twenty-five hours in work for their semi-annual book sale, which took place on April twenty-first and twenty-second. They raised over, just over fifteen hundred dollars, which will help go to support our programs at the library and in particular, summer library reading program.
Are there any questions for Nikki? Keep up the good work.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, we will go to item K. Paying off two thousand four safe drinking water fund loan. There's a note from Mike and Lisa for the auditor's suggestion after staff received approval of Finance Committee Chair Bali. We decided to have the water utility paid off the two thousand four safe drinking water fund loan, one hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, thirty-one cents. This loan is for the North Main Street utility replacement. We felt comfortable with the payoff. Due to the water utility having sufficient funds, cost savings, funds on hand are earning minimal interest, and the utility was saved on interest costs and removing restrictions on utility funds. We had to complete the payoff by May first, otherwise the next payoff date is May first, two thousand eighteen. So we can thank Mr. Bali and Lisa and Mike for that.
Basically, we're gonna save one year of interest on this loan. And as Steve indicated, the money is in the utility fund right now, so it seems prudent to do that.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
Thanks, Jerry.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, item ten, Reporter Committee's Personnel, Public Safety and Protection, April twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Jeannie, you're up.
All right, item one, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Increasing Ethan Milenbrock's Daily Work Hours by one and a half to two hours per day, which will cost approximately eighty-four dollars per week. So I'll make the motion that we increase Ethan's daily work hours by that amount.
Second.
Thank you.
Could I, just, I received an email from the coordinator, Elisa, and she just said that the county would be able to increase by one hour a day for the week. So I think if, just recommended maybe amendment to your motion to increase it to what would be approved by the county. Because the county, county has a vested interest financially in this because they provide the money for the coach. We provide, we pay for Ethan's salary. We're technically, we're still under the plan where they reimburse us, but we'll be paying for his salary starting in June. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just don't want to make a, or have you approve something that the county is not gonna support.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, but we couldn't do this and just have the county reimburse whatever they've reimbursed and then we pick up the rest?
Well, it's...
So we're picking it all up and doing it?
It's the cost, it's the cost of the coach.
Okay.
Yeah, because the coach was probably, I wouldn't even garner to say, you know, it could be thirty to fifty dollars an hour or something like that.
All right, well, yeah, let's follow the rules. Yeah, I'm happy to amend my motion then to increase the daily hours to the, to county approval?
Yeah, one hour...
One hour?
One hour a day to three hours, yeah.
Okay.
And he can't work another hour without a coach?
Not under the current arrangement that they have. And I think, maybe hopefully over time. I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah.
We've been, I want to be very clear, we've been very, very pleased with Ethan and he's a very positive addition to our staff.
Yeah, this has been a great thing the board has done, and this has been very good for him for, as far as work skills and income and just building his self-esteem and, so thanks to everyone for your part in doing this.
So just a bit of an add, because I was a director for WorkPlus for ten years, and so I've got some pretty intimate knowledge about these arrangements and how and why they come to be. Some of the things that Jeff might not know about Ethan and that Coach does is that Ethan might have emotional, emotional or other cognitive issues that prevent him from being able to work unsupervised. And so if we pay Ethan to work without a coach, even if we could, there's a potential that it would tax Jeff or another one of Jeff's staff because Ethan might need close supervision to do good work. So I would just put that out there that it's more than just paying Ethan's salary for an hour and a half, potentially having never met Ethan.
Yeah, that's why I asked if he's able to work unsupervised for an hour, knowing that that might be, something wouldn't work.
And we would always seek their advice and, like you say, follow their advices, you know, people who spend a lot of time with him, you know, literally twenty-four hours a day, they have staff with them and everything, so.
If you're down here and see him, I'd encourage you, introduce yourself, shake his hand in time. Job well done.
Yeah, will do.
It makes you feel good, makes you feel good.
So is the motion up to county approval, one hour per day? I heard, I heard something different.
I think that's what Jeff recommended. Is that right?
That is correct.
I just, thank you.
Did you approve the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that situation.
So we have to vote on that amended motion to keep Matt happy. So amended motion is to approve Ethan's hour, increasing hours up to the county limits, right? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approve Using Online Payments for Receiving K-9 Donations With the K-9 Fund Paying For Initial Setup Fees. So I will go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
So I, I have a question for you. Is there a nonprofit foundation that works in or around the police department whose mission it is to fundraise to support police initiatives and the police department?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. And the fire department does have a foundation like that. They're not directly related to the fire department, but they kind of are assembled with the idea that they fundraise to help the fire department with equipment and things of that nature. I think it might be good to...
Would they do that for us?
Huh?
Would they do that for us?
You'd have to take that up with Chief, Chief Linsmyer.
It's not typical for police departments to have, basically with fire departments. I don't know why that is, but the history is that police departments do not have that in their makeup.
I've never heard of an entity doing that for a police agency.
So while I'll fully support this motion, I would encourage you to look into that. It's very common, the library's got a found, well, I don't know that ours does, but other community libraries have foundations. There's, it's very common for foundations to spring up that are made up of people that are passionate about the mission and understand that there's restrictions to, you know, what can be done through government funding.
I'd love it if there were. I've just not heard of anything like that for a law enforcement.
Me either.
Yeah. That'd be great, though.
Any further discussion on this motion? So we have the motion, and second, to approve using online payments for receiving K-9 donations with K-9 Fund, K-9 Fund paying for initial setup fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, please.
Thank you.
Discussion on Action Regarding Purchasing X-NC Body Camera Glasses for Sworn Officers. So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the purchase of X-NC body camera glasses for sworn officers for approximately thirty-six hundred dollars, and the funding comes from Equipment Fund four-one-four.
Second.
Second. Third.
Thank you. Okay, this is coming from committee. Any discussion or questions here?
I think they sound neat.
I'm glad they're getting a more comfortable method of wearing those body cameras because those little head things just look so awkward.
Well, they have the, they have the option of the headband that they wear, and then they have either a cap mount that they can wear and put on the side of their ball cap. And then this would give them a third option. It's really kind of a more stable option for the camera, and I think the officers will really enjoy that, yeah.
Thanks, Chief. Further questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're on the last page, folks. We did item four, so we're on item five.
This is Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Purchasing Recruitment Material For Police Department. So I have a move that we purchase recruitment material for approximately fifteen hundred dollars. Funding is coming from the two thousand seventeen budget.
Second.
Thank you.
Third.
Chief?
Yeah, I don't know that it'll come to fifteen hundred dollars, but it's certainly material that's going to help us get out to job fairs and, you know, give it, give our agency exposure, draw attention to us. It's just, it's a rough time in many industries right now, especially in law enforcement. So one of the things that we can do is get out to colleges, universities, and recruit at their job fairs and get them right out of college, so that's our hope. So we're gonna get the, we're gonna get these marketing materials, their banners, their brochures. I'm putting together a recruitment video right now that we can show as well. So anything that we can do to highlight our department and draw good recruits, here's what we're trying to do.
So I have to tell you when this, how this came up. We got the, going on the glasses and I got an email from Brian that showed the stuff Ron has, and he said, "I really like this, too." And I said, "Fine, put together proposal, let's try and do both." Let's try and do both." So I knew the board supports the police department very strongly, and it's been tough times with recruitment and stuff, so this would be a big plus.
If it helps, it's great.
Yeah, I think it will. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks, Jeannie. So we're down, we did six. We're at eleven minutes now requiring action. There's Oregon Cable TV, April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen meeting. It's online for folks that are watching. Unfinished business, there's none. New business, approval of pending new operator licenses approved by the police department to stop and go. Amanda Heebner.
So move.[1479.26]